I call to order the regular session of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs on Tuesday, October 25, 2022, at 6:30 PM. Roll call, please.
Mayor Vatic Yodis.
Here.
Vice Mayor Lunt.
Here.
Commissioner Carr.
Here.
Commissioner Eisner.
Here.
Commissioner Kuyas.
Here.
Tonight's invocation will be given by Reverend Ted Morris of the Salvation Army. At the completion, we'll be standing for that. At the completion of the invocation, we'll turn and pledge allegiance to the flag.
Tonight's invocation is a prayer adapted from St. Augustine's Prayer over a thousand years ago. That's what he said. "In whom we live and move and have our being, you have made us for yourself so that our hearts are restless until they find their rest in you. Grant our elected officials purity of heart and strength of purpose that no selfish passion may hinder them from knowing your will for the City of Tarpon Springs and no weakness from doing it, but that in your light we each may see light and in your service and in the service of this city we all may discover perfect freedom. Amen."
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get started, I have two announcements. One, item 22, ordinance 2022-11, future land use application for the Libri Stable. Second reading's been deferred until November 8, 2022. The second announcement is, with us tonight is Ms. Erin Jackson, who's filling in as the city attorney. She's with Johnson Jackson, and she'll be with us this evening, I think, for one or two more meetings as well. Thank you. Okay, let's go to public comments. Do we have anybody for public comments this evening? Good evening, Mr. Gettys.
Good evening, Mayor. Sir, David Ballard Gettys, Jr. I live at Georgia Avenue in Palm Harbor. Historically, this time of year, many of us would congregate down at the old Coachman Park in Clearwater to attend the annual Jazz Festival holiday to listen to some of the world's most talented jazz musicians. Sadly, to my understanding, Coachman Park, a property previously held as a public park, has been sold to a private foreign developer. The Dinizio Group and Gotham Property Acquisitions intends to develop the property as upscale apartments located on the waterfront in downtown Clearwater, having private waterfront interests in its development in what was a previously domained public parcel of property. Again, I see complications with this piece of property. Article 1, Section 8, Clause 11 of the U.S. Constitution sheds light to captures on land and water. I ask, would this specifically located parcel of property serve a private impost and this development serve to facilitate that capture of both land and sea capabilities downtown on the waterfront there? I find that similar to the Anclot property that we have here on U.S. 19. This parcel of property has strategic implications in its location. And I, I think that as the government moves forward with such comprehensive planning, how does, does these key position properties formulate in, in such development? Article 1, Section 8, Clause 17 describes such development of forts, dockyards, other needful buildings. Both properties, the Anclot property and the old Coachman property, both have strategic significance, I feel, that need to be taken into concern. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gettys. Are there any other public comments this evening?
Good evening, Mayor. Board of Commissioners, Ms. Jackson, Chief, City Clerk. Peter Delax, 514 Ashland Avenue. I'll have three short passages to read. You'll pick up on the theme based a little bit on what I will say at this point. I've been watching the replay of the meeting last week, or two weeks ago, and I picked up on one particular word. Kulianna said at four hours and 56 minutes into the meeting approximately, he felt vindicated, vindicated. He had been against the Tarpon Tower, the Food Lion, and because of some of the intricacies that went on behind the dais, behind the public. He mentions he was subject to a grand jury. And his comments were, "Nothing changes generational family. Nothing changes. Same families, different players," how they use the system. So I'm going to read something here, first from Job 13, 17, and 18. Listen carefully to my words. Let your ears take in what I say. Now that I have prepared my case, I know I will be vindicated. Can anyone bring charges against me? If so, I will be silent and die. You have brought forth a case, and I do not anticipate you dying. Psalm 17, 1 and 2. Hear, O Lord, my righteous plea; listen to my cry. Give ear to my prayer. It does not rise from deceitful lips. May my vindication come from you; may your eyes see what is right. As the pastor earlier said, shining light. You are shining light. Isaiah 54, 14, 15, 17. In righteousness you will be established. Tyranny will be far from you; you will have nothing to fear. Terror will be far removed; it will not come near you. If anyone does attack you, it will not be my doing. Whoever attacks you will surrender to you. No weapon forged against you will prevail, and you will refute every tongue that accuses you. This is the heritage of the servants of the Lord, and this is their vindication from me. Lastly, in the comments, around five hours and 24 minutes in, Nicholas, I didn't catch his last name, thanked you. There are other people who thanked you before, but he reiterated how things are done, how lobbyists work behind the scenes. And I thought Commissioner Eisner did an excellent job of showing how much staff time was devoted to this. And I know you're talking about one of the things for recovery fee for emergency, but maybe you also need to start looking at a staff recovery fee when these projects that are so big take so much more of your time. It's not just a regular function of staff duty. So maybe if you're going to look at an emergency preparation fee to pre-protect, then maybe you need to do something on a fee basis to protect your staff and the residents of the city who have paid our taxes for Morgan Group to get their way. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Delax. Actually, we are working on an ordinance that would recover some of those costs, so thank you for your comments. Are there any other public comments? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, it's Barbara Walker, 3019 Bradford Circle in Palm Harbor, and my comment is inspired by your beautiful display out front, and I wanted to thank you for this great brochure. I will take it home to my family. That was my only comment, so.
Thank you, Ms. Walker. Are there any other public comments? Mr. Jump, are there any remote access comments?
If anyone online would like to make a public comment, please raise your hand, and you'll be allowed in to talk. And we do have raised hand, I'll allow the first person in. Yes, if you could state your name and address for the record.
Christopher Roboski, 1602 Gulf Beach Boulevard, Tarpon Springs, 34689. So it was mentioned at the previous meeting that an email was sent out from city staff to alert at Armstrong that Peter Delax was mentioning the 74-acre Walmart-owned property. So I don't know if that's still taking place, but I hope that they have to pay somebody to watch these meetings, or they're in fact watching them right now. And that goes for Tras Dagno, because I'm pretty sure they're going to want to know. That's pretty ironic, isn't it? They're going to want to know what's being said at these meetings as well. But I want to make sure that Mr. Camille understands that we haven't even got started yet with the Army Corps of Engineers stuff that you were lied to about. He lied to you. Armstrong and the bully lied to you. Ask your new attorney about those lies that were told. They were told to you that, about permits from the Army Corps of Engineers. And I know at least one of you investigated it and know for a fact that you were lied to. So all of these ethically challenged attorneys perhaps need to have an ethics complaint filed by the city and a bar complaint. I believe that that came up at the last meeting. And so that you can seriously consider that, put that on as an agenda item so that everybody can discuss it and decide exactly what route you're going to go. Because I'm here to remind them, I hope they're listening, that the Army Corps is where this project will stop. The brakes are going to screech. There will be no tearing up of that land. There will be no paving of any wetlands. It's not going to happen. And they better pray that there hasn't been one harmed gopher tortoise on that land, because that's being investigated. So it's time for them to walk away. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Jump, are there any other public comments?
And we do not have any other raised hands at this time, sir.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Jacobs, we don't have any emails. We're going to move on to the consent agenda. Before I get started on that, I want to ask, do any commissioners have anything that they want to pull off the consent?
It's not a pull, it's a comment, so I don't know if you want me to classify that and pull it.
Well, if you want to deal with one specific one, it'd be to pull it.
It would be number three and number six.
Three and six, okay. Any others?
I just want to make a quick comment on item four.
Okay, hang on a second. What we do to, what, under the rules of procedure, we've got Mr. Salsman here, who's our litigation attorney, and we have addendum item number one. Under our rules of procedure, I'm allowed to deviate from our rules for exigent circumstances. Quite frankly, I'm not sure if fiduciary responsibility is one of these, but I'd hate for Mr. Salsman to be waiting around here till 9:30 at night to get this thing done. So I'd like to go ahead and move addendum item number one up so we can get it in before 7:30. And it's discussion of authorization for the city's litigation attorney to file a motion to stay court proceedings in a matter of concern, Citizens versus Camille Salome, Morgan Group, and City of Tarpon Springs.
Point of order, Mayor. I just want to be clear, we're stopping consent agenda, and we're going to the special consent agenda, right?
We're going to get this item done. Hopefully, we may or may not be able to get the special, I'm sorry, the consent agenda item done. And if we don't get this thing done by 7:30, we'll move on to the ordinances after this is done, once it's completed.
Okay, just want to make sure, we're moving on from the consent item that we started on and going to the special.
No, I asked whether there was any comments, whether anyone wanted to pull anything. And that was to find out if we didn't have any, if we didn't have any comments on any of the consent items, I would move ahead and do the consent agenda so we don't get tied up with discussion on those and take us to 7:30. But because there's going to be comments from at least two commissioners on three items, I've decided to exercise my responsibility and duty under presiding over this meeting of moving addendum item number one to, ahead of this, the consent item.
Okay, thanks for clarifying.
Okay. With us, we have Mr. Andrew Salsman of Eunice Salsman Jensen, who is taking over the litigation for the concerned citizens, Ritt Sertiori, and the Colson case concerning the Anclot Harbor apartment projects. Mr. Salsman will be representing the city in that matter. And I've got my memorandum that I provided as backup and the, and on that item, I think it's pretty much self-explanatory. Basically, it stems from a meeting that, a question that I had for Mr. Dagno, who was our litigator on that matter prior to October 9. And he was unable to answer the question I had. I spoke to the city manager about perhaps getting one of our, for example, Ms. Jackson to answer the question, and he preferred to wait until we get our new litigator onboard, which I agreed with that. So Mr. Salsman came onboard, and I contacted him, asked him the same question, and he basically concurred on the motion. And also, I asked whether he believed that we needed city commission approval to move ahead with that. He believed we did, and therefore, we have that as an agenda item this evening. So I don't have anything more to say. The memorandum speaks for itself, but basically, it's to ask the judge to hold the court proceedings on the Ritt Sertiori, Ritt of Sertiori, until the special counsel's completed his investigation. And Mr. Salsman is here to answer any questions concern, from the commissioners. But let me go to public comments first. And are there any public comments on this matter?
Chris Roboski, 1602 Gulf Beach Boulevard, Tarpon Springs, 34689. Clay Colson plans to appeal the dismissals of his cases. So it looks like the city is going to have to deal with an appeal of the dismissal of his challenge to the approval of the Morgan Group project and the second DCA, and the appeal of the unconstitutional denial of his right to record court proceedings in the U.S. Supreme Court. So that's where you're going. You might ask this gentleman how to get out of this mess. Perhaps you could have him read that settlement letter that Clay Colson sent to you, and your city attorney lied to you about, and said it wasn't a settlement. Said right on there, settlement. Let this gentleman read it and say, is that in fact a settlement? Because it says it is, so maybe you can settle the case. And just walk away. There's no need to keep pursuing this, but you also have to abide by what he said. I don't know if he's still going to do it for free. He was going to settle the case for nothing. I don't know if he'll still do that. But I'm sure he will settle as long as you admit that he has a right to record public hearings and that it was an improperly granted order to the Morgan Group. Do those two things, I guarantee that he can be persuaded to settle the case. So that seems like the cheapest route, quickest way out. And I understand you're going to draft something in the way of a stay to the court. That's great, but it might not be necessary if you guys just walk away. So I don't know, I haven't spoken to Peter or Jane Graham about what they're doing, but I, I can speak for Clay in this regard, I'm pretty sure. So let us know. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Roboski.
Good evening, sir. A pleasure to meet you. Welcome to Tarpon Springs. Thank you. I really was hoping to wait till after everything was decided to basically say something. We've spoken before about having an attorney set aside for strictly the litigation cases. So I hope any agreement with Mr. Salsman is such that he will be the primary attorney, and it'll be his till it's all done, and that he will, with fresh eyes, review everything that's been submitted, not only from us, but from other parties. But as far as this particular aspect, I think it's important to let the court know, to say, hey, there's a whole lot more going on that we're learning about, and we'd like to clear things up. And then, once we know where or how we want to proceed, we would advise the court at that time. They may come back and say, no, we already have enough information. I'm not going to get into that, but you do have an opportunity now to look at everything in a fresh set of eyes. And that's all I would ask for, is that you do that. And we believe that if you do, you will see that we've been right all along. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Are there any other public comments? Mr. Jump, are there any remote access comments concerning this item?
Anyone online would like to speak on this item, please raise your hand, and you'll be allowed in to talk. And we do not have any raised hands at this time, sir.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Jump. Ms. Jacobs, I know we received one email. Would you like to read that into the record?
Yes. This is from Attorney Scott McLaren Hillward Henderson. Commissioners, our firm represents the Morgan Group. I am writing to express Morgan's objection to the board authorizing the filing of a motion to stay in the matter of concerned citizens versus Camille Salome, Morgan Group, City of Tarpon Springs. First, the city's engagement with Attorney Andrew Salsman is void ab initio, as it was done in violation of sunshine law. The city's charter provides that the board shall appoint a city attorney, yet no public meeting was noticed or held concerning Mr. Solomon's appointment. Further, the suggested stay would violate Morgan's vested right to develop its land consistent with the development orders. The board already took the legal action of staying the city's approved development orders. Now it is attempting to stay the court proceedings indefinitely while the city's alleged special counsel conducts an investigation. The proposed stay would, one, violate Morgan's constitutional guarantee of equal protection under the law; two, constitute a taking of Morgan's property rights without compensation; and three, impose an inordinate burden on Morgan's ability to and three, impose an inordinate burden on Morgan's ability to develop the property as already approved by the city, resulting in a violation of the Burt-Harris Act. Finally, allowing Mayor Vaticius to act as liaison between the board and the city attorney is improper. The city charter provides that the city attorney shall serve solely at the pleasure of the entire board of commissioners, not a single commissioner.
Thank you, Ms. Jacobs. Just for a couple of comments concerning that email for clarification, since it mentioned my name, I'm not a liaison to Mr. Salsman. I was a liaison to the special counsel and also the separate litigation attorney that would take Mr. Salsman's place at some point in the future. My role as liaison is done in that. I've completed my work with Mrs. Lewis to get those RFPs together, and they should have been issued. Hopefully, you'll be getting candidates on those two attorneys or firms at the first meeting of December, so you can take over from there as far as your selection of those two attorneys. As far as Mr. Salsman being here tonight, the reason is because, again, it was a follow-up to a question that I had to Mr. Dagnall, who was our litigation attorney at the time. He couldn't, he was unable to answer the question. And then I waited until Mr. Salsman was onboard, and I want to ask Mr. La Couris a question. Mr. Salsman's only role with the city right now is the litigator on these two cases, is that correct?
All the litigation that we have.
All the litigation that...
That's not the League of Cities, insurance companies, ones, all the rest of the litigation in the city.
Okay, but that's separate from the city attorney's work?
Yes.
Okay. And that should satisfy the one comment that we have this evening. Also, with regard to violating rights, all we're doing is asking the judge a question, and it's up to the judge to decide what he wants to do with that question, how he wants to answer it. And then, if he grants the stay, then Mr. McLaren can take the matter up with the judge. But this evening, Mr. Salsman is here to answer any questions that the commission may have. So let me, let me start with those. Vice Mayor Lunt.
I don't have a lot of questions proposed yet. Obviously, I'm aware of this from both sides. I think you've satisfied the fact that Mr. Salsman's appointment is not as our general counsel and is not as our, he's a temporary to handle our litigation, is that not correct?
Referred to by Mr. Dagnall as a gap attorney.
Right. I am actually surprised on this that TRASP was even mentioned and copied on this. I have no idea why they would copy our ex-attorney on what appears to be some sort of facetious objection to whatever we're doing. So, Mr. Salsman, I hope you know what you're up to when you have to deal with this. I'm not a lawyer. I'm a pretty good student of law. I find several of the, the things that have occurred during this by Hill Ward Henderson to be a little bit on the facetious and pressing side. So I'm, I hope you're well aware of what you're, what you're going to deal with and I look forward to. Thank you.
Commissioner Carr.
Yeah, a couple of things. The subject line is not subject to public records until the conclusion of litigation, but then it's all in our backups, so I thought that was kind of interesting. So I just want to understand, Mr. Salsman, is our gap attorney for litigation only, so if you have six or seven different lawsuits going on outside of even Anclot Harbors, he's still going to be handling those, Mark?
Yes, except for the ones that, and I'll get a list of those as we're putting together. There are certain cases that are being defended by the Florida League of Cities and our insurance carrier. They're the chooser of the attorney for that, and they've hired a term for Orlando. I believe there's only four of those cases. Again, that we don't have control of hiring the attorney because it's a suit that's handled by our insurance company. But this is the, this is the litigation that is not involved with the Florida city that he'll be handling.
Okay. So who selected Mr. Salsman to handle litigation specifically?
I did. From the, from the last meeting in your authority, as I'm working on the assignments, obviously, the first need I had after the meeting Tuesday night was to get this litigation, there's papers I had to sign and get it all changed over, not only with the League of Cities from that. So I chose Mr. Salsman for, to do the litigation work.
Okay. And just like you chose the Ms. Johnson, Johnson, or...
Jackson.
Jackson to be here as well, too, right?
Yes, yes.
All right.
She was, she was very early in the process, and we had nobody to at least guarantee me the first two or three meetings of this board. Obviously, she's a labor attorney that's worked with us for a long time, so she's doing that and helping us, helping us right now on some of the other items. We need some simples, the attorneys there for, so...
With a couple attorneys here, I need to understand a little bit more. So there's a motion to stay currently that the city made. I think we did that as a board, or the board decided to do that. This is in addition to that, am I understanding that? Are you familiar with the motion to stay that's currently in place?
I can honestly tell you that I've been waiting for the files from your previous litigation counsel...
Okay.
And have not received them yet. I did have a conversation with Mr. Dagnall about the, what was pending with the litigation. There's only a few cases that actually have anything that's really going on. I discussed this matter with both the mayor to answer his question and with the city manager as to whether or not it would be appropriate to at least request the court to stay this matter while you're doing this pending investigation to determine whether or not there is additional information which the court needs to be made aware of. So from that standpoint, that, that's solely the aspect that I've looked at, and I'm before you here to request.
Okay. Mark, maybe I phrased it wrong. Is it no permits are issued, is that a stay? Is that what, because the board, I don't think, I've been in favor of it, but the board voted for...
You're asking the city...
Yeah, the city manager. There's no permits can be issued until they come back before the board and prove that all the...
All the criteria, that list of criteria are met.
And that would not be a stay under the litigation. That would be the process that you're going on, as far as I understand what Jay told me.
Okay. So the stay would just be another layer of preventing the developer to move forward at all if they received all their documentation, I'm assuming?
This stay would be asking the court to hold off on all litigation pending the internal review that you were going through with counsel that you hired.
Okay, so the litigation from Colson and litigation from the concerned citizens, not to review anything else or move forward with any other decisions until the special counsel reviews the backup data?
That is correct.
Who's the special counsel? Do we know yet? Mark?
Ms. Lewis and I, actually, Ms. Lewis put the RFP together. I don't know that it's out on the street. I believe it probably is.
Okay.
It's just there, I can't see her. But in any case...
That's pending.
We did discuss about when it would be coming back to you for a selection, and that would be the first, or as early as the first commission meeting in December.
And then, just so I'm understanding correctly, so the two steps, one's the motion to stay, the second is to be, to ask, the mayor's asking to be the liaison between Mr. Salsman and the city? Am I understanding that?
It's more of a contact person that I can speak to.
Oh, that's, Mr. Salsman had requested that. And I'll let you explain why, your rationale for that.
Normally, when I handle litigation for municipality, I speak with the city manager, just discussing what we're doing, keeping them informed, see if there's any issues. My understanding in this particular case, that that may not necessarily be as appropriate, so I'm asking for someone, whether it's the mayor or someone authorized for me to talk to.
Just for the motion of stay?
No, with the pending, if anything else comes up in the meantime while I'm serving as your gap attorney.
For all pending litigation?
For all pending litigation. A lot of times, what I would do is talk to the city attorney. I understand, obviously, that you're, you have an interim for that, so I need somebody with some institutional knowledge and the ability to at least contact.
On these two cases, not the rest of the litigation, on these two.
No, no, I meant, I'm sorry, on these two.
Yeah.
I need to correct that.
Okay. I don't know, it just seems odd that, I think, these are only questions, they're not comments right now, right? Mayor?
Asking me?
Yeah.
Basically, it is odd. The commission made a decision to keep the city manager out of this for obvious reasons, because of the investigation. Quite frankly, I'm not sure how this is going to work until we get to the very first question that Mr. Salsman will have concerning a case, and then I'll have to deal with that. I'd probably talk to the city manager and it would just have to deal with it, that's all. I don't have an answer for you right now, how that's going to work.
Yeah, so I'm not sure if you're aware, but we don't serve as a strong mayor board, where all have the same rights and same authority, other than the mayor runs the meeting, he signs all of our paperwork and checks and other fun things.
No, I'm the city attorney for the city of Gulfport, it works the same way.
Okay. So I mean, I do have some issues with you just going to the mayor in that aspect. I think you should be coming to the board.
And it is whatever the board wants, I'm asking it only...
I brought this up in the past, is that in the last meeting, we do have an internal auditor. He's a third party, not on anybody's team, other than he reports directly to the board. And I'm going to make the same recommendation, that all communication should go through him, and he could put it out to the board, and that board can respond back to him and he can respond to you. That would be my recommendation, but I'll leave it up to the rest of the board to decide what they want to do. I just think that's the best policy to take. It's good government and not putting additional authority in anyone's hands that weren't given to us by the residents.
Whatever the board wishes, that's why I'm here.
Sure, thank you. I've got no further questions, Mayor.
Commissioner Eisner.
Thank you, Mayor. Didn't we discuss this at the prior meeting and we decided to allow you that?
There's, there's two things. I was liaison for putting the RFPs together for our special counsel and for the litigation, the litigation attorney that would be the permanent litigation attorney. Okay? And that was for the RFPs. That, my role in that is complete. We received an email from Mr. McLaren identifying me as a liaison in this particular situation with a request for Mr. Salsman. I'm not a liaison right now. If the commission takes care of this action and moves forward with a motion and moves ahead with appointing me as a liaison, then I would be the liaison. But we have not crossed that bridge yet.
Right. But we discussed this already.
Yes, we have had that discussion before.
And it wasn't that you were going to gain all the information and distribute to us, we were all going to have free access to anything that Mr. Salsman has. That's what I understood. I didn't understand what was just explained, that it was going to be a single person dealing. So I didn't understand what was being explained as about, about going to somebody else, but...
Right. Mayor, can I, can I clarify this?
Yes, I was going to say, let Mr., I think he could probably give us a couple of scenarios. Go ahead.
When I do litigation, I do litigation for municipalities. I need to have somebody to, a contact person. That's really what I'm looking for. Either I have an, when I do it on behalf of the insurance company, I have the insurance adjuster, normally the city attorney and the city manager. I don't have any of those three in this situation. I just need somebody that I can at least contact either with information questions or to tell them what I'm planning on doing, just so they have notification. I'm not trying to keep anything away from the board. The board will get all the information. But in between your board meetings, I may need to talk to somebody.
What about the safety protocol? That's what I'm just thinking. So you're not restricting any of the other board members from asking questions of you as well?
Absolutely not.
Okay. I needed to just clear that because that was...
No, that's an important point.
Yeah, that was just...
That is an important point.
It was a little befuddled there. So my next question is, thank you for taking this unique position. How long is fair to wait for our prior attorney to funnel through and get you the information so that you're aware of what's going on?
He was putting everything on a thumb drive and providing it to me. I know that he brought some files this week over to the clerk's office. I think those were prior non, not cases that were in active litigation. So we are communicating, I just haven't received them yet.
Okay.
We did, we had to do the substitution of counsel first, which we did, and it's a little convoluted when you do that. And I worked that through with the city manager, and now I'm just waiting to see the files. I can't answer you any in-depth question because I haven't seen them.
Well, I'm sorry that that's the case, because we can't then ask. But, you know, I know that in the past, there's been a request made by a city commissioner and myself, and we've, neither one of us have gotten a response or an answer. So I was just curious, how long do you wait before you feel enough time has gone by that? I mean, I don't know what the next step is.
Well, oh, you're regarding the files? I will be in touch with tomorrow, with their office.
So you think you'd be having it by this week?
I would expect to. I know it takes a little time, obviously, if they're transferring things onto a thumb drive. I don't know who's doing it. It takes them a little while to do that.
Okay.
It's not, it hasn't been a lot of time where I would sit there and say, there's a problem. I don't think that we're getting 100% cooperation.
I just want to check. So would you be able to let us know if there is an issue?
Absolutely.
Okay. The rest of my questions were answered by your response, because I would have asked you about the Scott McLaren letter that we received today. So, thank you, appreciate your help. Commissioner Cullias.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Salsman, I just want to ask a couple of questions. You are familiar with the law firm Hill Ward Henderson?
Yes.
Have you ever worked with them or alongside with them?
I've worked, there was a case going back maybe 10 years involving the city of Treasure Island, where I believe they were a party that we worked together as kind of co-defendants on that to resolve an issue. I've been up against them, too.
Okay, so you've been up against them as well. Thank you, Mayor. I don't know if anybody else wanted to follow up, but thank you.
Okay. Are there any other questions? Okay, so, thank you, Mr. Salsman. So we've got two matters here ahead of us. One is to authorize Mr. Salsman to proceed with a motion to stay. And then the second item is the appointment of a liaison. If I could have two separate motions to that effect, let's take the, authorize the motion first.
Motion to authorize the motion for stay?
I'll second.
Okay. No further comments on that. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Cullias?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
No.
Vice Mayor Lunt?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticius?
Yes. Now, the second motion concerning a liaison, and I'd like a motion for naming a liaison, and also a second, please.
Motion to appoint the city clerk as a liaison for Mr. Salsman.
Is there a second to that? Okay, that motion dies for lack of a second? Is there another motion?
Motion to appoint the internal auditor as the liaison.
Is there a second to that motion for appointing the city auditor as a liaison? That motion dies. Is there another motion?
I'd like to make a motion, motion to appoint Mayor Vaticius as liaison to Mr. Salsman.
Second.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Cullias?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
No.
Vice Mayor Lunt?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticius?
Yes. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Salsman.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, let's move back to the consent agenda item. We're going to pull, I believe it was three and six, and was there one more?
Four, Mayor.
Four. Let's go ahead and have a motion to approve, yeah, I'm sorry. That's right. Let's go ahead and have a motion to approve items one, two, five, seven, eight, and nine. Number one is the attorney's fees, Johnson-Jackson. Number two is authorized execution of DEA task force agreement. Number five is award file 230029-C-AS, fire equipment supplies and service. Item seven is renew file number 20014-CDSJL, liquid carbon dioxide. Number eight's award file... Number eight's award file 230030-N-AS, single source purchase of HAC equipment, could be pronounced hatch, equipment. And then, and number nine, award file 230031-N-AS, single source purchase of air vac replacement Let's check to see if there's any public comments concerning any of these items. And, Mr. Jump, are there any public comments concerning items 1, 2, 5, 7, 8, 9?
If anyone online has comments on these items, please raise your hand, and you'll be allowed in to talk. And we do not have any raised hands at this time.
Okay. Let's have roll call, please. Oh, a motion to approve in a second.
Motion to approve consent agenda 1, 2, 5, 7, 8, 9.
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's plenty of seconds.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Cuyas?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lunt?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticius?
Yes. Item three, renew file number 190025-C-CM hydraulic repair parts. Mr. Eisner, or Commissioner Eisner, you had it.
I just wanted to, you know, remind the board again, that when we purchase anything, we're purchasing a, repairs and maintenance to everything that we purchase. So, it's just, anytime I'm going to see a police vehicle, a fire truck, or anything, any sort of thing like this, and they all come with increases. So, what we're originally pricing and agreeing to is not the end, it always seems to go up. So, I just wanted to, you know, make the board aware on things like that, that it's, you got the maintenance that goes with it. It's not that we can afford the boat, it's the maintenance that goes with it. So, that was pretty much it. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other commission comments? I did ask for public comments on that item, is that right? I did not. Are there any public comments concerning item three? Mr. Jump, are there any remote access comments concerning item three?
If anyone online would like to speak on this item, please raise your hand, and you'll be allowed in to talk. And we do not have any raised hands at this time.
Okay, thank you. If there are no other commission comments, nor another, then let's go to roll call, please.
We need a motion in a second.
You need a motion.
Motion to approve consent agenda item three?
Second.
Commissioner Cuyas?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lunt?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticius?
Yes. Okay. Item four, Commissioner Cuyas, you had this one, right?
Yes, I just wanted to thank the city manager and city staff. We had talked about it a little bit over a year ago, just bringing some extra festive cheer to other neighborhoods in the community, and there will be some additional displays over by Harrison Street, and, you know, Dorset Park. And so, I'm very happy and proud that we were able to help to spearhead this, and just want to say thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other commission comments?
Yes. I know we can't do it this year, but I did speak with the city manager, that we might consider, in the future, using our CRA funds to possibly, to pay for this, and then not have to utilize our own funds to pay for this. So that, you know, it's still, it's a beautification, and I think we can use other forms of funds. But, I know this year it's a little too late to do that, but we can look forward to doing that in the future.
Yeah, this is a budgeted item.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other commission comments? Public comments, any public comments concerning the Christmas decorations? Mr. Jump, are there any remote access comments?
If anyone online would like to speak on this item, please raise your hand, and you'll be allowed in to talk. And we do not have any raised hands at this time.
Thank you. May I have a motion in a second, please? Or did we do that?
Motion to approve consent agenda item four?
I'll second.
Okay. Thank you both. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Cuyas?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lunt?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticius?
Yes. Item six, back to you, Commissioner Eisner.
Thank you, Mayor. This is, again, the same thing. My question is, are we buying too many vehicles, are we utilizing them to its fullest? Because, with them come the repairs, and that's pretty much what I need to, I'm going to keep hammering away at that. It's, we can blow a budget just by buying and, you know, staying on top of the maintenance. So, I do want to have strong consideration in the future, of whether we need that, and what impact it has versus how much it helps. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Eisner. Are there any other commission comments concerning this item? Okay. Are there any public comments concerning this item? This is increased file number 210067, motor vehicle parts. Mr. Jump, are there any remote access comments concerning this item?
If anyone would like to speak on this item, please raise your hand, and you'll be allowed in to talk. And we do not have any raised hands at this time.
Okay. May I have a motion in a second to approve, please?
Motion to approve consent agenda item number six?
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Cuyas?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lunt?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticius?
Yes. Mr. LaCourse, item 10 is next, do you think we could do that in 10 minutes?
It'll be close. What do you think? Well, I don't know what questions it will be, but, excuse me, Tom Fung, Public Works Director. About, he said about 13 minutes, 14 minutes for his presentation? So, if, there's going to be obviously comments afterwards.
We can, we can do the FDEP grants, if you'd like.
Yes, that'd be good.
Okay. Why don't we, for the sake of time, go to item 13, approve FDEP standard grant agreement amendment for funding for construction of Mango Street, safety and drainage improvements. Mr. LaCourse.
Yes, Mr. Robertson?
Yeah, real quick on those. These items, we're asking the board to approve, I'll start with item 13. This is the grant agreement from DEP, this is the state grant for $925,000 for Mango Street construction. I apologize for a typo in the recommendation, it says 952,000, so swap those two numbers, so it's 925. Again, this is for the construction of Mango Street, this is the second phase of that work.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any public comments concerning this item? Mr. Jump, are there any public comments concerning this item, remote access?
If anyone online would like to speak on this item, please raise your hand, and you'll be allowed in to talk. And we do not have any raised hands at this time.
Thank you. Commission comments, Vice Mayor Lunt?
No, I really don't have too much to comment on, except that any grant money is good grant money, we should go for it all.
Commissioner Carr?
Yeah, real quick, this is at 925,000, more than what we initially asked for by the state. Obviously, this is something we might totally support, and I'm happy that the staff spent some time to apply for this, the representative's office, and the governor signed it. So, I appreciate that. The one comment I would make is that we need to look at what projects we're looking at for this next fiscal year, and plan for that as well, too, so we have the applications ready. I know there's a new representative coming into our area, and so, something we could start that conversation early, to make sure we're ahead of the game. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Eisner?
Thank you, is my comment.
Commissioner Cuyas?
No comment.
Yeah. And, Mr. LaCourse, I asked Mr. LaCourse whether both grant applications and contracts are reviewed by an attorney, and they were.
Yes.
So, that's done. No further comments, may I have a motion to approve in a second, please?
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Cuyas?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lunt?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticius?
Yes. Item 14, approve FDEP standard grant agreement amendment for funding construction of Martin Luther King Jr. Drive and South Spring Boulevard flooding abatement and intersection safety improvements.
Mr. Robertson?
And again, for item 14, this is, we're asking for the authorization to have the mayor execute that agreement. That is for the $673,619 for use of the construction of that project. It's the same agreement language, and the city attorney has reviewed this one as well.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any public comments concerning this item? Mr. Jump, are there any remote access comments?
If anyone online would like to speak on this item, please raise your hand, and you'll be allowed in to talk. And we do not have any raised hands at this time, sir.
Thank you. Commission comments, Vice Mayor Lunt?
I'm just glad it's not a traffic circle, but thank you.
Commissioner Carr?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. This is a area of Tarpon Springs that's flooded for many, many years. It's great that the state was able to put funding behind this, that we don't have to spend city dollars behind it. It's traveled by pretty much everyone in the city, all the different schools, emergency vehicles, et cetera. So, I'm really excited to see this one get started. A question, Bob, is there a start date yet?
Don't have one exactly, we're working through the design now, we're at about 50% design point. I'm hoping to be able to put it out for bid by the end of this year, or the beginning of, in the spring, sorry, in the beginning of the next year, so that it goes to construction in the spring.
Great. Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Commissioner Eisner?
This couldn't come fast enough, I just can't wait for it to, it's just an annoyance. So, thank you, I hope it gets done and quick and trouble-free. Thank you.
Agreed.
Commissioner Cuyas?
I just want to thank city staff, I know you guys are putting a lot of time into it, to where we're at right now, and just look forward to it all being completed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Robertson, we do have that tied to, this is kind of an urgent project, and I'm just mentioning this for the sake of everybody that's here, and it really is tied to commencement, which you're going to talk about a little later, I think, right? On the Anclot River Bridge, Beckett Bridge?
Beckett Bridge, yes.
Okay. And, which is late 2023, so we have to have this done by that timeframe, we know that. And, I know there was an estimated time, a start of time, and as far as an estimate for the amount of work, we probably don't have that yet, duration of the work.
Not yet, no.
Okay. And, as far as the elevations and everything, those have been worked out, and they're tied to what is being proposed for the Woodcombe Bayou area plan as well, is that correct? So, we integrate with that?
Yes, that's correct.
And then, I think we're going to talk a little bit about the Craig Park seawall and Spring Bayou sidewalks, and how that's integrated with the Woodcombe Bayou as well. So, I want to make sure, from everybody's perspective, we're not looking at this project in isolation, we're tying it to everything else we're doing in that area, to try and get this flooding abatement in hand, and when it's done, it's done, and then we can move on to some other things regarding the city. So, that's all I have. May I have a motion in a second, please?
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, roll call.
Commissioner Cuyas?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lunt?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticius?
Yes. All right, it's 7:27. I'm going to pause there for three minutes. We actually have to wait three minutes mandatorily, to not begin the ordinances until 7:30. So, if any of the commissioners want to take a quick break, you may. Okay. The next item is 19, Resolution 2022-37. It's a quasi-judicial process, it involves time warp restoration, it, classic cars and so forth, and it's on LNR Industrial Boulevard. I'm going to ask the city attorney to read the ordinance, and, it is an ordinance, resolution by title, and go through the quasi-judicial proceedings, and also swear on any witnesses that are here.
Resolution number 2002-37, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, approving application number 22-92, requesting conditional use approval to allow for major vehicle repair, vehicle paint spray booth at 1400 LNR Industrial Boulevard in Unit A1, comprising 2,600 square feet MOL, located in the industrial restricted zoning district, providing for findings, providing for conditions, and providing for an effective date. This is a quasi-judicial proceeding, where the Board of Commissioners acts in a quasi-judicial, rather than a legislative capacity. At a quasi-judicial hearing, it is not the board's function to make law, but rather to apply law that has already been established. In a quasi-judicial hearing, the board is required by law to make findings of fact, based upon the evidence presented at the hearing, and apply those findings of fact to previously established criteria contained in the Code of Ordinances, in order to make a legal decision regarding the application before it. The board may only consider evidence at this hearing that the law considers competent, substantial, and relevant to the issues. If the competent, substantial, and relevant evidence at the hearing demonstrates that the applicant has met the criteria established in the Code of Ordinances, then the board is required by law to find in favor of the applicant. By the same token, if the competent, substantial, and relevant evidence at the hearing demonstrates that the applicant has failed to meet the criteria established in the Code of Ordinances, then the board is required by law to find against the applicant. Do we have any witnesses? If so, please stand and raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give in this proceeding is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. Is there anyone present that claims to be an affected party? Want to ask the commissioners whether they've had any ex parte communications in this matter? Okay, we're going to start the hearing. Ms. Vincent, would you proceed with your presentation, please?
Thank you. Before I get started, I do just want to disclose, just so that there's no confusion, I do live in, across LNR Industrial, in the Riverbend subdivision, so, my staff worked on this, I'm just presenting the case at this point, but I do want everybody to know that I do live there, so.
Thank you.
And just a note, we did discuss this ahead of time, staff did handle all of it, but because of the proceedings and the, you know, what happened to planning zoning board, I thought there's no reason Renee couldn't present this tonight, but we want to disclose that.
I appreciate you mentioning that, thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you. This is application 22-92, for Time Warp Garage, this is a conditional use application. The property in question is located at 1400 LNR Industrial Boulevard, it's particularly one small unit within the larger complex, Unit A1. The land use and zoning on the property is industrial limited and industrial restricted. As such, our code does require, or considers, anything that would have a paint booth as major auto- As such, our code does require or considers anything that would have a paint booth as major auto body, and so it does kick it into the conditional use criteria, and that specifically is what the applicant is seeking tonight. He, as stated earlier, he does classic car restoration, small scale, and does have the need of a paint booth, and so he is seeking to install the paint booth consistent with all the requirements, permitting requirements and air quality requirements and whatnot, so that's what we're seeking this evening. So just to orient everybody, this is the property at 1400 LNR Industrial. To the north, we have the city's fire station and RO plant, as I said, across LNR Industrial. This is the residential and industrial plan development of Riverbend. You have additional industrial to the south, and that's the general context of the area. And just to take a bit of a closer look, the unit is actually located in this portion of the building. This is a multi-tenant industrial building, warehouse building, or industrial building. And then, so you see the breakout of all the different tenants. This one is approximately 2,600 square feet. So we do have our conditional use review criteria that are required, must find, have a positive finding of. One is conformance with the Land Development Code. Number two is the proposed use is appropriate to the property in question and compatible with the area. As I stated, this is developed as an industrial site and is surrounded by industrial on three sides. Across the street is the Riverbend subdivision is residential, but there is a natural buffer area that was preserved when that, does provide a densely vegetated buffer along with the distance of LNR Industrial with itself. The use would be consistent with the comprehensive plan and the industrial limited future land use map category. We don't think that the application, the applicant would, excuse me, that the proposal would adversely impact historical or environmental resources. The applicant has provided documentation that the paint booth will meet or exceed all the applicable EPA standards. This is something that is also regulated through the Florida Department of Environmental Protection and their Air Quality Division. And then, just for the edification of anybody that may want to know, Pinellas County is one of the local jurisdictions that actually has a local air quality division, and they can follow up on state complaints on their quality, so they have a local office as well. Criteria five, would the use adversely affect adjoining property values? Again, this is within an industrial area already. The, you know, the entire Riverbend subdivision was predicated on that, you know, clean industrial can coexist, and so the property values have remained stable in the area even with the industrial development going on around them. The use is not expected to adversely impact the city's ability to provide public facilities. And again, this is an existing use. It's already, you know, space is there. It's, you know, rededication of an existing space, and it is an industrial use and an industrial property. So the staff recommendation is to approve Resolution 22-30, 2022-37, granting conditional use approval for the vehicle repair with the paint spray booth and with the following condition that they do obtain all their necessary building permits. They are in process of applying for those, and they're just in a holding pattern waiting to have this approval. We did do a public notice within 500 feet, and we have not received any responses as a result of public notice. Planning and Zoning Board did review this at their October 17 meeting and recommended approval, but it was a unanimous vote, and there was no public comment on this application. Someone did speak about adjoining another property that backs up to Giroux Boulevard that was not really related, but it was a venue for someone to talk about an issue that they were having. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Ms. Vincent. Vice Mayor Lunt, do you have any questions?
I, I actually don't have any questions. I actually got a chance to review the Planning and Zoning Board meeting on this subject. I think the property meets exactly the intent of that particular property, and I'm happy to go on with the Planning and Zoning Board's recommendation to approve.
Thank you. Commissioner Carr.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. Renee, thank you for the backup. Couple of quick questions. When notices are sent out, is that from the front door to the front door of a property? Or is that like by airspace 500 feet?
So the way that works, we will, they actually get sent out 500 feet from the larger property boundary. So that, the larger property, here, I'm seeing her pointing in the air. Let me go back to the... So this is the larger parent site, if you will, so a 500-foot buffer gets snapped around that, and anything that it picks up is what gets noticed.
Okay.
So, I mean, just, I mean, I live over here and I got notice, if that helps you any.
Technically, the city would also, then.
Yes, yes.
A couple of things just to put on the record again, I will make sure that I'm clear. All the painting is done inside?
It is, yes, and the applicant can speak to that as well.
There's filtrations requirements as well, too, so.
Yes.
Yep.
Yeah, the filtration system that, and he'll speak to this, I'm sure, when he gets a chance. It filters 99.5% of the particulates and emissions, so.
Yep, just want to put it out there.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Is that it?
Yep.
Commissioner Eisner.
Thank you, Mayor. I also did watch this in the planning and zoning. I have no further questions.
Commissioner Cuyas.
No questions.
May I just have your name, please?
Robert Leinhart.
Do you have any questions for Ms. Vincent concerning your presentation?
Not at this point, no.
Not yet?
Thought it was a pretty good presentation.
Your presentation will come up, just if you have any questions for Ms. Vincent.
No.
Okay. Ms. Vincent, would you like your presentation added to the, to the record, made part of the record?
Yes, sir, thank you, as well as this written staff report.
All right, sir, now it's your turn. Whatever you'd like to say.
Well, I thank you all for considering the approval for this, first of all. Just to let you know, I really appreciate, you know, probably coming a part of your community here. We were an existing business in Clearwater, and unfortunately, because of the real estate market earlier this year, we're forced to move, so here we are. Again, everything is set up and ready to go. I've got electrical and structural engineers that have already looked at the building and permitting and everything, and plans are about sealed, ready to be delivered to the board for review. As far as the booth and stuff, it's going to be limited use. It's just a father-and-son automotive repair shop. We do antique, classic, resto mods, and classic custom cars and things like that, which sometimes with, it comes with, hey, my wife backed into something, or hey, my neighbor did this, and we have to do a small repair here and there, but there's days that the booth doesn't even run. There's weeks that the booth doesn't even run. So we're just, we're a very small producer of emissions and toxins to the environment, so just want to get back in business and try to make a living.
Questions by the commission, Vice Mayor Lunt.
No questions at this time.
Commissioner Carr.
I don't have any questions, thank you.
Commissioner Eisner.
Welcome, you married up. This is a great town, good food, good people.
I already can tell you about the food. I'm not happy about that.
But welcome. I did watch your presentation, and, you know, I just wish you much luck. Thank you.
Well, I definitely appreciate it. This has been a pretty rough year for us, so hopefully we can overcome and carry on.
Yeah, moving is no fun when you're in line of work.
It's been twice so far this year, so it hasn't been easy for anybody, so. But I do appreciate everybody, and thanks for the vote, and we'll make you guys proud.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Eisner. Commissioner Cuyas, hang on a second, sir.
No comments. I'm happy to support this item, this application.
I have three questions, actually. One, are you limiting your work, and this is for the benefit of everybody that's watching, do you limit your work to classic cars or just minor damage?
No, we take, like I said, we take in, you know, say if your wife drives a 2019 Lexus or something, and she crashes the bumper or whatever, we'll take that in, do a small repair on it. It's, I've been in this industry for over 30 years. You meet so many people, you've greened so many customers, and with that, you know, they know that you do auto body repair and refinishing. So yes, we do, from time to time, do small repairs, you know, things, bumper repairs, door repairs, things like that. It happens. It comes with the territory.
Realistically, when do you think you'll be open?
I'm hoping as soon as I can.
Okay.
So the plan, I'm waiting on the electrical engineer to sign off on all the blueprints. He was out just the week, a couple of days before our last meeting, last week. So we have to do a power upgrade in the, in the building from the meter, so I'm waiting on the blueprints from that and sign off on the plan so that we can get everything submitted.
So maybe about a month or so or less, or?
I, I hope less than a month we can get started, and maybe by the end of the year, we can be up and going 100%, I hope.
I think it was Commissioner Carr talked about the curing of the vehicles outside. I know during the P&amp;Z meeting, you mentioned that the, your painting stays in the booth until it's outgassed?
Correct. So we're not a production shop like Caliber Collision, or Gerber, or Crash Champions, or some of the larger conglomerates you guys see around town, where you drop your car off at Monday morning at 8 o'clock with the bumper hanging off, and you're picking up at 5, completed. We don't do that. That's not the type of work that we do. So, you know, that being said, we paint something, get gases out in the booth, the booth gets shut off, the doors get opened up for the night, and we carry on tomorrow morning.
Okay.
So.
The, also, Ms. Vincent, I'm going to need your help. If you, sir, there was a, you mentioned something, and can you show us where the other paint booth is in the same facility? That was an important point.
So, I think right around where she's kind of pointing, right there. There, that's Redding Truck Body Company. They've been up in this area for apparently a very long time. So they manufacture, paint, and install some of the beds for probably some of your city trucks, possibly. Utility body trucks and things like that. So there is a booth on the same premises. It's probably going to be used a lot more than mine will.
Yeah.
But yes, there is another one there.
I thought that was an important one.
Also, too, there's, I mean, Dorado Boats is a couple of buildings down. They're building and manufacturing boats and things like that, so they're using gel coat, fiberglass, resins, and, you know.
Acetone.
Acetone, thinners, you know, so all the, kind of the same things that we use, just a lot more of it.
Right, okay. Thank you. Ms. Vincent, do you have any questions for the applicant?
I do not.
Okay. What we're going to do is go to public comments now. Is there anyone in the public that wishes to make a comment? Okay. Mr. Jump, are there any remote access comments concerning this item?
If anyone online would like to speak on this item, please raise your hand. You'll be allowed in to talk. And we do not have any raised hands at this time, sir.
Thank you. We're going to close the public hearing now. You may sit down, if you'd like, and go to commission comments, not questions. Vice Mayor Lunt, do you have any comments?
Just to reiterate the fact that I think this is an excellent use of the space and welcome to Tarpon Springs.
Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Carr.
Yeah, I think it fits the neighborhood with this, and it's nice to see additional growth of businesses coming to the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Eisner.
No comment.
Commissioner Cuyas.
No comment.
Okay. I'm fine. May I have a motion and a second, please?
Motion approved, Mayor.
I'll second.
Okay, roll call.
Commissioner Cuyas?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lunt?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticiotes.
Yes. Okay, we're going to go to item 20, Resolution 2022-38, Project Administration Department Reorganization. Ms. Jackson, if I could ask you to read the resolution by title, please?
Resolution number 2022-38, excuse me. A resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, authorizing changes in the organization of the Project Administration Department, including the reclassification of a position, adding two positions, and providing for an effective date hereof.
Thank you. This is not quasi-judicial, so I'm going to turn this over to the city manager.
Yes, Bob Robertson will be making the presentation on this.
Thank you. Bob Robertson, Project Administration Department Director. For this item, we're asking the board to approve a reorganization of the Project Administration Department, my department. This reorg will include the addition of the Grant Project Specialist, aka the Grant Writer position that the board previously approved this, this year. It upgrades the Project Supervisor position to an Assistant Director, and it adds a second Project Inspector position. I already have one in the department. And that second position would remain unfunded and vacant for the current fiscal year. The reason for that strategy is it, it's in anticipation of increasing construction projects in the next, in the coming years, primarily thinking of grant-funded projects, not only what our Grants Rider should be winning for us, but also the ARPA projects. So we have a lot of work to do. Funding for this proposed reorg has been previously approved by the BOC, and it is included, or was included, in this current year's budget, so there will be no change to the current budget to accommodate this request. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Robertson. Let's go to public comments. Are there any public comments concerning the reorganization of the Project Administration Department? Jump, are there any remote access comments?
If anyone online would like to speak on this item, please raise your hand, and you'll be allowed in to talk. And we do not have any raised hands at this time, sir.
Thank you. Let's go to commissioner comments. Vice Mayor Lunt.
I think this is a necessary and needed reorganization. I look forward to the Grant Writer being on board. And I think an extra Project Inspector is something that we've needed for some time, so I'm for this.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Carr.
Yeah, this is an important department that doesn't get a lot of credit for a lot of things that you guys do, making sure that projects that we, the board hires, the city hires to complete projects is done correctly and timely and followed up on and things along those lines. So I appreciate everything you guys are doing, and I support the reorg, the reorganization. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Eisner.
I also agree. Thank you for all you do. I know you work very hard. We do speak often. I follow you up very often, and I think you need, in the right way, all the help you can get, because it's a lot of work, what you do, and I just want you to know that we really appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Cuyas.
Thanks, Bob. I'm happy to support this reorganization. Just, when do we think we're actually going to hire the project, the Grant Writer? How soon do you think we'll come across that?
We've already got that advertised, and we've been taking in resumes, so as soon as I get a handful of good quality ones, we'll be starting some interviews.
Good, looking forward to it also. No further comments.
Thank you. Mr. Robertson, this is fairly straightforward. We've had that discussion. It's a simple reorganization, also very, although very important to you, so we've got full support of the commission. We've had the public comments, commissioner comments. May I have a roll call and a, I'm sorry, a motion and a second, please?
Motion to approve, Mayor.
I'll second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Commissioner Cuyas?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lunt?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticiotes.
Yes. Item, thank you, Mr. Robertson. Item 21, Resolution 2022-43. This is supporting a transportation alternative grant. Ms. Jackson, may I ask you to read the resolution by title, please?
Yes. Resolution number 2022-43. A resolution of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, Board of Commissioners, expressing its support for transportation alternatives grant applications for bicycle and pedestrian improvement projects to better connect schools and parks, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. City manager, of course.
Yes, I'll, Renee Vincent, make the presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and Vice Mayor and Commissioners, hoping to make some more work in the future for Bob's Project Admin Department. This is Resolution 22-43, expressing support for transportation alternatives grant applications for bike and pedestrian improvements. The, the Transportation Alternatives Program is a program that's funded through, it's a federally funded program through FDOT and then managed by, for Pinellas, which is also our Metropolitan Planning Organization. And so we're into that funding cycle, and we're seeking to submit two applications for funding. One would be for project development and preliminary design of a continuous bicycle and pedestrian facility that basically would connect where the Pinellas Trail intersects with, or is in the vicinity of Klosterman Road. It would connect from that point out west Klosterman with Carlton and Curlew in Florida, out to our schools and our beaches. This, that particular project, believe it or not, has actually been on the Transportation Improvement, the tip list, for probably 25 years. the, the tip list, uh, for probably 25 years and it's just never moved. And so, uh, we have an opportunity to submit for it. Um, so that's one project that we would like to apply for grant funding for. Uh, and it would be for, for development and design. Um, construction would have, obviously have to come later. Um, and then the second project would be design and construction of safety improvements on, uh, Distant Avenue. As you know, we had the Distant Avenue Improvements, uh, Plan. Um, so it would look at those safety items, um, that have already been, uh, they're included in that plan. And then within, just to be crystal clear with, for the gap area, that, um, that requires additional, you know, feasibility analysis for what could even, what is even possible there. There's wet, it's wet, it's next to the landfill. So this would be, uh, more of an investigation, um, continue the investigation of that site for its feasibility for a future public use. So that's the two things that we'd like to apply for funding for. Um, just, uh, the, the, the maximum grant award for each, uh, for each could be up to three, three million. Um, we're still getting estimates to see what we need to actually include, but we'll get that wrapped up, um, and before we would actually submit the, the grants, uh, up to Ford Pinellas. So I also have Caroline Lanford here, um, to answer any questions because she lives, breathes and eats this stuff. Um, she's really the brains behind this and she's the one that prepared all of this. And so if you have questions about the details of it, I may have to defer to her. So with that, I'll stop and try to answer any questions you have.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Vincent. Um, let's go to, uh, public comments. Are there any public comments concerning this item? Um, thank you. Um, Mr. Jump, are there any remote access comments?
Take a break. Anyone online would like to comment on this item, please raise your hand and you'll be allowed in to talk. And we do not have any raised hands at this time.
Okay, thank you. Um, let's go to, uh, commission comments. Vice Mayor Lunt.
Hi, um, excuse me. You, you mentioned that the inception for the pedestrian trail extension from Pinellas from, was 25 years sitting there?
It, it's been, so, yeah, there's, there's a transportation improvement plan, you know, or project list, the tip list that's maintained by our MPO. And so literally like, I mean, it was before I came to work for the city the first time. That proposed trail connection had been submitted as a potential project. And that just means it's, it's in the, and it was approved as, on the list as something that could be pursued. Um, so yes, it has been there for quite some time.
Okay, so in light of that, um, and I, I, as you know, the city's grown and expanded. We still have unincorporated areas down that end of Klosterman, et cetera. Has there been other pathways looked at that? For example, uh, maybe taking it from the, the distant area, the distant Mares area down Mares towards, towards the beaches? Is it, is, is that particular pathway, the secure, this one that goes down Klosterman and up Curlew and et cetera? Is that cast in stone or is that just something that we're considering?
It, I, I won't say it's cast in stone and I may have to get Caroline to help with this, with this answer. It's, but it is something that's been recognized al- already. So I think if we were going to dramatically change that, we may have to go back and, and talk with Ford Pinellas about that, but.
Well, the, the thing that I'm getting at is it's, it's been there for 25 years. Who recognized it? I mean, it's been a long time.
Yeah, that is actually, it, um, came up during the comprehensive plan update process. Uh, we were over at the Mariner Village, uh, Tarpon Cove area and they, uh, saw that on the map of potential projects and they jumped on it. A lot of communities members have jumped on it like, oh, that'd be great. We would love that. So it has kind of been vetted recently with the public. Uh, with respect to Mears, that's also on that big map of projects that may happen someday.
Okay. Any chance we could get included a bridge across for Pinellas Trail across Klosterman? And stop hosing up the traffic every afternoon?
I can't answer that, so.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
County's been looking at that for a long time.
But it's a se切s comment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Carr.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. Uh, this is great news. Uh, this is great news for the residents. This is great news for the city, uh, great news for the visitors. Uh, if you travel this portion of town, uh, throughout the city, a lot of it is actually county road that the county is responsible for. Um, but there's very limited sidewalks. The roads are narrow. Uh, this is a dangerous area. People are biking it constantly. People are walking on it constantly. Um, I had a chance to make, meet with Mr. Blanton, um, who's the director of Ford Pinellas and drove him around the city and showed him some of these areas also. And it just expressed the, the issue of county roads, um, and needing to improve our safety for pedestrian and, and, um, walking and, and biking. One of the things that the city adopted was the zero deaths in Pinellas County. That was like right when the, the new board, um, set in the place. And so this is, I think, follows along with that, um, goal and providing a safer, uh, space for pedestrians and bicyclists. Um, these are just for the, the design standpoint. Renee, am I understanding that correctly?
The, the, the trail out, the, the bicycle trail, um, out to the beaches would be, would be designed. The, the grant application for the distant corridor would actually include some construction of those elements that have already been identified in that distant avenue corridor plan.
Yeah, so I mean, it's, it's basically federal money that we're able to.
Yes.
Capitalize on through the county that the city doesn't have to pay for improvements along the roads that we could use for other funds or use those, other funds for other projects to move forward on. So, um, these are all, I think, no brainers. Uh, I am encouraged to see that the, the spur continues west to the water on Klosterman, goes to Sunset Beach and also goes down Sunset Drive, uh, out to Fred Howard Park. I think those are important pieces of the trail, um, from a design standpoint. I would also, um, say from Vice Mayor Lunt's comments that Mears is also a desire to see some type of trail, but I, I, I'm happy to see something move forward in this. And I appreciate Caroline, your time that you put behind this. There's a significant amount of detail in here. Um, and, uh, Renee, do you know when this is due by and then when they're going to be making the decisions?
Uh, we have to have the grant applications in by November 10th. Um, I don't know what the decision process.
It'll be usually the beginning of the year.
Begin, uh, Caroline says beginning of the year. We should know.
Okay. And it goes to the advisory board first and then it goes to the, um, Ford Pinellas Board. Is that right?
Yes.
All right, I'm fully supportive of this. I, I love getting money that we don't have to get from our taxpayers here locally.
Okay.
Commissioner Eisner. Thank you, Mayor. I think they said they were going to start it in 25 years is what, what I had last heard. But that was a joke. Um, I was at the Ford Pinellas Vision Zero meeting, um, a couple of weeks ago and, um, uh, there was a huge discussion about bikers and people getting hit by cars and whatnot. I am a biker as well. Um, the bike path for Klosterman is the roadway. I don't know if anybody knows that. Yeah. There's a picture of a bicycle there and a picture of someone that's about to get run over on the bicycle. So it, it's not really a bike path. It's a death, a death trap. Um, and I did speak also to Blanton about that. I also spoke to him about putting a arm on Klosterman in Alt 19 because people stop there and they have no regard that, that the bike, bikers are now able to go. They look to the left and they run over the person to the right. It's just, you know, there are, there was a discussion, Dave Eggers brought up a discussion. There's two right, um, no turn on right, no turn on red, let me. There's, there's two of them in Florida. One is with a line through it that is under no circumstances you could turn and a regular red, you can turn. So it's kind of extremely confusing. Um, we spoke about trying to clear that up. Also, I was at, um, as I am on the board of the, uh, Pinellas County School Safety. Um, just recently, this youngster, Ethan, um, waiting for school, uh, was killed. And, uh, it was a pretty bad situation. Um, so we need to do whatever we can for safety. Um, and I'm, I'm 100% behind this. Uh, it, it's, it's a bad situation. If you look at the numbers of how many people have been hit, um, and what's happened, you know, due to it, um, I would do anything that I could to try to keep it safe for people to maneuver through our city because it's a beautiful place to ride. So thank you for all you do and Caroline, thank you for what you did. And like I said, I hope it's less than 25 years that it gets implemented, so. We'll try to move some of those up.
Okay, thank you. Um, Commissioner Kuyas.
Thank you. I'm happy to support the, the bike path that's going to lead out to Fred Howard and Sunset Beach. It's, it's important to have some clear wide lanes for them and walkability. That southwest quadrant of the city really doesn't have too much to offer with, uh, being able to bike to and from. And, uh, I think it's a good start. I'm looking forward to how the design's going to look. Uh, as far as the, the second portion of that project with Distant, um, I understand it's just a feasibility study, but I, I do think at some point the, uh, there will be some type of feasibility and supporting a gap in which, uh, I'm not going to support. I will support each and every intersection north of, uh, Distant in those, all those neighborhoods to going all the way up to Live Oak to, um, clean up the area, the intersections as well. And, uh, you know, I, I appreciate Ford Pinellas and wanting to connect certain areas of the road. But, you know, with that zero death policy, they, they do mention, uh, the minority neighborhoods and, uh, a road going through Distant would in fact actually put a major road through the minority neighborhoods. So I just want to, um, look forward to seeing what designs and what feasibility is going to come out of it all. So thank you.
Thank you.
Um, thank you, Commissioner Kuyas. Um, Ms. Vincent, the, um, um, a couple of things. Well, let me start off where, uh, Commissioner Kuyas left off. As far as the, um, the gap and the wetland, um, I, I think that until we get a little better organized with regard to wetland impacts and policies and things, um, I understand what we're doing. That was discussed. And is this what this grant, is this an, a follow-up to what we had done already?
It is, yes.
For the whole thing, is that correct?
It is, yes.
Okay. And then, um, my just preference would be what Mr. Schneider had picked up on was to look at something a little bit to the west of the gap, um, as close as we could to the boundary of the landfill. And, um, what I would ask, um, is to, obviously you work for the city manager, but he's also got some folks working on, um, the Cops and Kids Complex and maybe integrating whatever bike trail to SPC because I know there's going to be some services at the Cops and Kids Center as well.
Correct.
To, to make it a little more convenient for that, um, transportation, pedestrian, multimodal transportation between the Cops and Kids Complex and the, um, uh, SPC. I, I think that would be a, a win-win situation for that area. And kind of look at the gap, but focus on.
Yeah.
Really something a little more practical as far as the, um, pedestrian multimodal between the Cops and Kids area and, and the SPC. The, um, the Klosterman, I mean, basically, um, what I'm reading is, we're looking at striping. Is that pretty much it or is it going to be a separate trail?
I, I think the intent would be separate trail where, you know, divided trail where, where possible.
Okay, i- is that pretty much the, what's the expectation is at this point?
Yeah, I, I believe so, but I'll let Caroline.
Uh, it's one of those things that we're just going to have to go figure it out. Um, some places that might be possible, but wherever, we would really like to look at something that is physically separated from the traffic lanes.
Right.
For that additional safety feature. So it's, uh, envisioned as a 12 to 15 foot trail wherever we can fit it, but just kind of.
But it, at some point it'll transition to striping, I would suspect, when it gets onto our narrower roads.
Um, we, we've got pretty good right of way. The problem is there's a lot of utilities impacts and there's going to probably be a lot of drainage impacts. So we're just going to have to come up with some alternatives and run them through the wringer and see what comes out best.
Now, assuming that the, uh, as you, as y'all are describing, the county's very excited about this. Is there any, some kind of a rough timetable that we're looking at, assuming this thing gets in the fast track with the county?
Uh, it is, we are getting a letter of support from the county to include in our application and, um, there is some hope that usually these things are five years funded out. They get added to the, the next fifth year. But there is some hope that with the, uh, federal dollars that are flowing through for safety projects, that it might get, uh, moved up a little bit faster than that.
So no, no sooner than, I'm sorry, no later than about five or six years, but possibly a year or two earlier than that.
Yes.
And then as far as the, um, the Mears, what I would call not trail, but the Mears path, uh, which to me would be a natural for us straight out to Florida Avenue. Yeah, I, the county seems to be a little interested in that as well as what I heard this evening.
Yes, um, I, I can put in an application for that next year.
Okay, all right. Well, let's cross our fingers on that. That's, there, there's three of those actually. One was the, um, around Witcombe Bayou. The other one was around Kramer and then this one. And I'll be honest with you, my two favorites were Kramer and, uh, Witcombe. The city manager's was Mears. So over the years, we've had these discussions over.
For a long time.
And quite frankly, I, I accused him of why the riprap was put down around Witcombe and Kramer was so that we couldn't build a, a trail around those bayous. So he won. Uh, anyway, that would be very nice if we could get something on Mears Avenue as well. Cause that, that would, um, and at some point it might be nice to have a, that, that's a good location because you've got some shops right there at the trail that people could take a break and get a Coke or something like that, water or whatever, and then continue on out to the beach community. So, um, I appreciate all the work that y'all are doing in this. Really, really do. So, um, that's all the comments I have and, um, we, pardon me.
His light's on.
Oh, I'm sorry. Additional comments. Um, Vice Mayor Lunt, let's go to you.
I'm sorry. I really, um, I wanted to comment further on, on, as an adjunct to my comment about bringing Mears over, which I actually think is a better idea than Kramer because there's right away issues on Kramer, but, um, I wanted to, to let you know that I've, I've been involved with the, with the Distant survey from day one. Um, I've been a heavy proponent of no matter what we do with the gap, of bringing it up to standard as far as crosswalks and lighting and signage and safety, um, completely from, from one end to the other. It's just atrocious all the way through. So I wanted to say that I'm 250% in support of whatever we can do that. If we had to pick between one or the other, I'd say do that before we do the, before we do the, the bike extension. So anyway, that's.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Carr.
I had enough already said. That's from earlier.
Oh, whose name is that?
That's mine, but that's from earlier.
Oh, you didn't have anything? Okay. No other comments? Okay. Um, may I have a motion and a second, please?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, roll call.
Ms. Kuyas?
Yes.
Ms. Eisner?
Yes.
Ms. Carr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lunt?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticiotes.
Yes. That ends the, uh, ordinances and resolutions and let's get back to the, uh, special consent agenda. Would any commissioner like a break? You do, you do. Okay, let's take a, um, let's, um, recess at 8:12 and reconvene at 8:22. Okay. Reconvene at eight-twenty-three. I'm gonna start the special consent agenda. And the first item's ten, approve stormwater action plan update. City manager, of course.
Yes. Tom Fugge, you wanna introduce that item, and our guest is gonna give the update?
Sure. Tom Fugge, Public Works Director. I'm gonna introduce Brian Anderson from Burgess and Iple. He's been our stormwater engineer, actually, since the inception of this stormwater action plan, which began in two thousand and nine. So Brian, would kindly come up here and I'll knock out a ballpark, I'm sure.
All right. Good evening.
I'm Brian Anderson.
I'm the project manager for the city's stormwater consultant services contract. So just a little agenda overview for tonight, what we're gonna discuss. We're gonna have a little introduction about myself. We're gonna discuss the city's stormwater program, and then we're gonna get into the nuts and bolts of the city's stormwater action plan. Again, Brian Anderson, I'm graduate at University of Central Florida. I've been practicing stormwater engineer for twenty-two years. Sixteen years of that post-PE registration. Have a long working history with the city's stormwater contract, starting in two thousand and eight. So just over fourteen years of a continued service on this contract. Proud to serve alongside of the city on this contract. A little about the city's stormwater program. All streets and stormwater staff are certified and trained annually for illicit discharge and the sediment control practices. They maintain thirty-two outfalls, one-hundred-and-thirty-two miles of roadway, forty stormwater management facilities. And they have two primary goals. One, to mitigate the potential for flooding and improve water quality. And they do that through continuing the stormwater capital improvement program. They also have a very active maintenance program, which includes the street sweeping, the fertilizer ordinance that you're aware of. They have monthly reviews for the treatment of aquatic growth. And then they're always in compliance with their MPDS permit through the county and FDEP. Quote number two is to inform the public of their part in protecting the stormwater systems and surrounding water bodies. They do that through regular educational programs and events or activities. And shown in the photo in the top right is one of our public meetings for one of our capital improvement projects. All municipalities have their own unique stormwater challenges, and the city is no different. The color graphic you see on the right is developed from the LiDAR data, which is basically a 3D scan of the surface of the city. The areas shown in red and white are the highest in elevation, and then those shown in green or yellow are the lowest. As you can see, we range from elevation thirty-two to elevation two, just within a thousand feet. It's very unique topography for a coastal community. You'd expect it to be a lot flatter. So that's, that creates challenges for stormwater. There is also localized closed basins. And if you don't have any infrastructure in that area, then obviously frequent flooding occurs. That becomes a challenge. And then on the photo on the left is a coastal outfall. Obviously, those outfalls are influenced through tides from the Gulf, and that becomes a challenge as well. So getting into the stormwater action plan and the nuts and bolts and a little bit about the history of it. Historically speaking, in nineteen ninety-three, Dames and Moore created the first stormwater master plan for the city. In doing so, they developed an inventory of the city's drainage facilities. They delineated the overall city watershed and the internal drainage basin boundaries. They also evaluated the existing drainage systems and created an overall master drainage plan. However, like many master plans, if you don't have a plan to implement those proposed alternatives with respect to the fiscal planning needed with design and construction, they sit dormant and collect dust. And that's unfortunately what happened here. There was no financial planning with this document, and so the city at that point became just reactive in performing field maintenance to resolve some of these problems. So this reactive approach continued for a number of years until Bob Robertson had the vision of completing a stormwater capital improvement program that would be a living document, one that would be updated annually with, for design and construction costs, and to capture new flooding locations and things like sea level rise and grant funding opportunities. So in an effort to capture that vision, in two thousand and nine, we documented, we created the first stormwater action plan. In doing so, we documented all the existing flooding problems. And then we eliminated all the non-jurisdictional work. Those are the problems that would be located in DOT or county right-of-way. And then we developed evaluation criteria that we would use to evaluate all the problems with using the same lens or criteria. We did a lot of data collection and then conducted field investigations to help us develop those conceptual solutions to resolve the flooding. When those conceptual solutions were developed, then we developed the preliminary construction costs. Now that we had the cost and the evaluations, we could perform the cost-benefit analysis, which ultimately develops your stormwater action plan or stormwater capital improvement plan. Really hard to see here the text, but this is basically a summary of all the stormwater problem areas initially. All project or problem areas were provided, were given a map ID number, a brief description of the problem, and then we documented the actual problem origination, whether it was with the Dames and Moore study, or if it was something that city staff had notified or noticed in the field with maintenance issues. So this is the stormwater action plan project location map. Again, it's kinda hard to see, but there's a lot of color coding going on. The circles represent the existing flooding locations. Yeah, we also have different colors that represent whether the project's in design, whether the project's been completed, whether the project's in construction. We also have on here all those projects that are non-jurisdictional. And then we also identify all the water, impaired water bodies and future TMDLs, as well as the yellow lines are kinda hard to see, but those are the internal drainage basin divides within the city. So in order to evaluate the flooding locations using the same lens, we created this evaluation criteria based on impacts to these, to traffic safety, related to flooding, obviously. How the flooding impacts traffic safety, emergency access, property impacts, environmental concerns, problem documentation, whether there's already existing problem documentation, what type of maintenance the city is performing on these locations already. And then the city has a score as well. And each of these criteria have their own point scale. That's right in this, right here. Each one of these is broken down with its own point scale, and when combined, create a total SAP score, or stormwater action plan score, for each location. So next phase would be the data collection and research phase for every, every location. We would review historic contour aerials. We would look at current aerial imagery. We would review all the current LiDAR data. We'd collect and review the FEMA flood maps. We'd collect and review the NRCS soils data. We'd also be looking at surrounding permitted projects and the design information associated with those permits. And then we would also review any existing flooding complaints that are either with the city, Pinellas County, or DOT. Our next step with the evaluation of the flooding locations is actually putting boots on the ground, performing those wet and dry field investigations to help us determine the cause and extent of the reported flooding. From our experience, most street and property flooding that occurs within the city can fall into three categories. Either undersized or no current drainage infrastructure, or a closed basin, or a volume-sensitive basin, or those that are in the low-line coastal areas that are subject to tidal flooding. So shown here are developed areas with undersized or non-existing drainage facilities that are needed to provide that flooding relief. The top-left picture is facing north on South Walton Avenue, just south of Tarpon Drive. And then the bottom-right is facing north along Gross Avenue, just right out here outside our door. So closed basin and volume-sensitive basins are the, occur throughout the city. And since they have no positive drainage outfall, the flooding typically worsens with further basin development. The photo shown here is facing east along Spruce Street, just east of Gross Avenue. And tidal flooding occurs throughout this, many city coastal areas, mostly due to those low-line nature of the roadways and properties that have those hydraulic connections via the storm sewer systems to the adjacent tightly-influenced water bodies, such as the Gulf, bayous, and Anclot River. Photos here, I'm sure, are all very familiar to everyone's room. On the top-left, facing west, along Park Street, Brett Roosevelt is in the background. The middle photo is facing east at Bayshore Drive. That one's actually been corrected. We installed a check valve there a couple of years ago, so that's no longer occurring. And then the top-right photo is facing west on Dotto Canies Boulevard. We currently have a stormwater pump station under design to help resolve that issue as well. So in our, once we have our, all of our data collection and field work, we've developed two conceptual solutions for each flooding location. The reason why we create two is because with engineering, there's always more than one solution to solve the problem. And an example of that solution is shown here on the, on the, on the far left. It's kinda hard to see, but the flooding is occurring here, just east of Levis Avenue, along Penn Street. And the yellow line work and structures or circles represent the proposed infrastructure that would be installed to resolve that flooding. And then the cyan line work represents the existing infrastructure that's associated with the Tarpon Elementary School. So we So we use these conceptual solutions to develop our construction and design cost estimates that include survey. They include geotechnical. They include the engineering design. They include all the materials that's shown here in this table here to construct the proposed infrastructure. It also includes a mobilization by the contractor and a twenty-five percent contingency for any project unknowns. So the next phase, whoops, sorry, pressing the, there we go. So now that we have our conceptual cost and the SAP score, we can perform that cost benefit analysis for each solution to determine which solution is the most cost effective for the location. This is done by dividing the grand total cost by the total SAP score for each location. The projects are then sorted from low to high by their total cost per SAP point. And that's what's highlighted here in the red box, which ultimately becomes the city's stormwater capital improvement program. This process and ranking gives priority to those projects that will bring the most benefit to the community and the natural systems within the city with the least amount of capital cost. So a little about the stormwater success, or the success resulting from the stormwater action plan. We've completed thirty-four capital improvement projects. The table shown here are six successful grant applications for the data we've developed within the old action plan allows us to write these grant applications that have been successful in securing just over four point five million dollars in grant funding for design and construction of these projects, which improves flooding abatement and water quality within the city. Another success for this for the stormwater action plan is the at-your-fingertips documentation that helps city staff answer questions from the board or citizens like, where are we spending our money, right? So this table here in our stormwater action plan, Table seven, is a summary of all the completed projects, their costs, and any pertinent project information that we feel that the city may need in answering those questions. Additional at-your-fingertips documentation is answer that question that we hear all the time is when is the flooding going to be resolved in my front street, in my front yard? So we take the capital improvement program and condense it down into this document. It's color coded. And this document is shared on the website. And for each project location, it's different colors. The blue indicates that the project's in progress. Yellow is it's in, well, that would be in progress being in design. Yellow would indicate that it's in construction. And green would be that the project's been completed. And then the columns represent the important milestones that everyone's looking for. When is design going to take place? When may, when we, when may right away acquisition be initiated if it's needed for the project? And then the begin and end for construction. Another success for the stormwater action plan, this is one I'm very proud of. The storm, the city's stormwater action plan was was recognized by the stormwater professionals in our community. And the Florida Stormwater Association, or FSA, has excellent awards every year for stormwater programs or stormwater project. And in two thousand and twenty-one, just last year, the city's action plan was awarded the two thousand and twenty-one FSA Outstanding Achievement Award. Shown there on the left is yours truly, Mr. Tony Manello, your Streets and Stormwater Supervisor. He does an amazing job. I love working with this man. Myself and then my right-hand man, Rick Aguirre. So in closing, we like to refer to the stormwater action plan as a living document. As it requires attention and updates in order to provide, to be useful to the staff and citizens of the city. Because it is a fiscal planning document used to assist with developing project budgets, we perform annual updates to the project unit costs. Those are shown there in this box right here. And then those update the total costs. We do that annually. And then we capture, we update the document to capture any new flooding or water quality issues that the city may have. With that, that concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. Let's go to public comments. Are there any public comments on this item? Mr. Jump, are there any IT remote access comments?
If anyone online would like to speak on this item, please raise your hand and you'll be allowed in to talk. And we do not have any raised hands at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Jump. Let's go to commission comments. Vice Mayor Long.
Just a couple of comments and maybe a question. First, I want I want to let you know that I appreciate the rigor and and the work that goes into doing this, the analysis. That's very straightforward. You say you review design cost estimates on an annual basis? Have you found, I mean, I know our our costs have been going through the roof, it seems. Every three months, we we get a fifteen percent increase or maybe more. Is it wise to just do it on an annual basis? Is it on kicked off on an annual basis based on when the project, you know, was put on the sheets or how is that put into effect?
Yeah, initially, when we started the SAP, we were actually doing quarterly updates. And we found that it just, the updates being on a quarterly phase, we were just repeating the information over and over, and we weren't capturing any really new flooding projects, you know, on a quarterly basis. So we were like, so the discussion was made, let's do this on an annual cycle in order to capture, I guess, the increases in costs that do occur. And obviously, in the last three to five years, that's been pretty challenging. We do use the DOT's historical cost estimates for Area Seven, which is Pinellas County. And then we also use other cost estimates that we receive from active bids that the city receives, as well as other active bids that we we receive through our work with Pinellas County and other municipalities. So those costs do get updated just from from experience and through documentation. But we figured the once a year, because it is a planning document to help the city create budget planning for the stormwater capital improvement program, we feel that the one, the annual updates was sufficient.
Okay, so in your opinion, I guess, do you have a handle on what kind of cost increases we've seen over, let's say, just the last eighteen months?
Easily fifteen, twenty percent.
Twenty percent on an average, would you say? Okay, the other thing I noticed when I was going through this whole thing was was there was a lot of mention of at-your-fingertips documentation, et cetera. Where is that information? Who has access to it?
So all of it is in the stormwater action plan document. And I would, so the city has a copy. It is an electronic document. It can be shared electronically if you, obviously.
And this is updated how often?
Once a year.
Once a year?
Yes, sir.
Well, that would explain why some of the data is coming from January in two thousand and twenty-two, and we're already in fiscal year twenty-three. So my suggestion was we might want to take a look at doing it a little more frequently, at least for the next year or two, or whatever, maybe on a on a biannual basis rather than on an annual basis. It's getting harder and harder for us as a commission to look at cost projections and stick to them. And what happens if the cost goes crazy, the commission gets a little out of sort on whoever's project managing, et cetera, et cetera. We know it's not their fault, but but that's what happens. I I personally, being sort of data-driven person, like to see my data updates a little more frequently than once a year. But anyway, that is my comments. Thank you.
I'll just add to that, you know, given that we are updated annually, these, it is a planning document for just fiscally planning. But you have to take in mind that once these plants, these projects get approved and go to design, they take another year or two for design, and then they, so you still have that delay. So the costs that you're seeing being projected now are still even behind after for design. So once it gets into design, then those start, those construction cost estimates get really narrowed down. The unknowns get smaller, and then the city has a more closer idea of what the actual construction costs.
Don't you do your cost estimates? Do you put a inflation factor in there, for lack of a better word?
Yes, sir. With all those, there's a twenty-five percent contingency added.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
No more comments.
Commissioner Carr.
Thanks, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. What does TMDL stand for?
Total Maximum Daily Load.
And that's like in the bayous and Lake Tarpon, I saw?
Yeah, so that is a state-driven water quality criteria, and it's evaluated dependent on the nutrient loading, phosphorus, nitrogen to a water body. And after the evaluation of the water quality, if it's deemed to be impaired, then a TMDL will be established, which limits the total maximum daily load of nutrients that that water body can receive. And once that TMDL is implemented, then a basin map action plan is created. And whoever is contributing to that water body then has a percent allocation based on their contributing area to the water body as to how they're going to create capital improvement projects to reduce their nutrient loading or phosphorus loading.
Okay, that's a lot of information. I understood, I think. I appreciate that. So they're saying future TMDLs, so that's the bayous and Lake Tarpon. So at some point, they're not TMDLs currently, but they're going to be?
Correct. They are not TMDLs currently, and they they may or may not be in the future. It's just, it's the, has the potential to be.
So currently, like the city of Tarpon Springs is monitoring the water quality in Spring Bayou and other parts of the city because of other regulatory reasons, right?
Correct.
Okay. We we talked about baffle boxes a little bit, and that's one way of preventing. I'm assuming that would be one way of preventing some of that nutrient-rich
Absolutely.
pollution, or whatever you want to call it, to get into the bayous and the rivers. You did mention that we have one baffle box in the city. I do think it would be wise to continue to look at additional baffle boxes or other ways. It could be through the Sustainability Committee, Mark, that they look for other alternatives to. Right now, there's just a lot of stormwater that goes directly into the river, directly into the bayous without any filtration at all. Baffle box will do that. It'll do the filtration of the silt and other garbage that's going out there. So one of the concerns that I have is stormwater, growing up here and and obviously seeing, being in a lot of different storms. And you see the waters going straight into the bayous and takes all the garbage with it. So I do think it's important to have some additional protections there and planning for those as well, too. So hopefully, that's something we could take into the adoption of this living document that you referred to. Is there any grants that we're, the city's looking at that you're aware of? I know you showed a nice page of grants that have been received, and I think it's a great job on the city staff and your your side of things. Is there any future ones that we're looking at currently?
Yeah, currently, we've got one, we just made an application for additional grant funding on the Dotacanese project through the Water Management District.
Okay.
That's a recent application just made, what's it, a month ago? So we should hear results on that in April. And then we're currently working with DEP just recently through the Vulnerability Assessment Action Plan. That grant was approved for the city's action plan assessment.
Okay, that's that's for like the tidal areas, is that right? Or lowline areas for?
Yeah, so the Vulnerability Assessment Action Plan will look at sea level rise combined with storm events and look how those events impact critical infrastructure, roadways, your, what's for our treatment facilities, things that have, are there critical infrastructure to the city. And then we'll evaluate the impacts to those and develop a report that will create basically BMPs or best management practices that will help create a plan to alleviate those problems that foresee, in the foreseeable future with sea level rise.
Got it, okay. I'm going to come back to that one, but you talked about Dotacanese. Is that the one at Athens and Dotacanese?
Yes, sir.
Where the, we receive state funding, but then it's going to cost a lot more than what initially the thought was behind it?
Correct. So that was one of the reasons why we submitted the application to the Water Management District. We had a meeting with them. They liked the project. And they encouraged us to submit. So hopefully, if that's successful, that'll be about a million dollars to help offset that additional cost.
Okay, like the millions of dollars coming in. Sounds good. What about, so we've got the water treatment plant across the street. Is there any, when you talked about the tidal and storm events and things along those lines, is there anything that's being researched along those lines about how to protect that? And that might be a Paul Smith and Tommy question later on, but I just know that's right next to our tidal river.
Yep.
And then stormwater, if we had a big storm, that would obviously create a big issue. So I'll follow up with Paul and Tommy about that one.
The vulnerability assessment will look at that, so there'll be some answers that derived out of that, out of that, that analysis. We've been working with Tommy and Paul on that.
Okay. Who maintains this living document you've been referring to?
Oh, we do.
You?
The consultant.
Okay. I've got a couple of other spots I could send. Who should I send that to?
You can send it to Tony, and he'll get it to me.
Okay. All right, sounds good. You mentioned that, which I totally understand this, so there's a lot of state roads, there's a lot of county roads within Tarpon Springs. You're only looking at city jurisdiction roads, right?
Correct.
Okay, so who's chasing, or who's responsible for chasing the county and the state for like Pinellas Avenue or Woodcombe or something along those lines? Is that someone on staff, or do you coordinate with that at all?
We've helped staff coordinate those conversations. We've documented, an example is alternate US nineteen. There's a lot of flooding problems along that corridor, MLK area. We've documented those. And we're working with them to create a communication piece to the DOT saying, hey, these are documented issues. There are safety issues with the drainage. How can we form a partnership in in getting some resolutions to them?
Has there been any receptance from DOT in in that aspect, or have you guys moved forward with that? Because obviously, it's an important thing.
Yeah, we haven't moved forward with with actually giving them the information yet.
Okay, is that, do you have a timeline on that? Because I would like to try to chase that myself as well, too, to encourage our F dot representative and our state officials.
It can happen at any, we can make it, we can have it completed before the end of the year.
Okay, yeah. Mark, if you could just remind us about that, and Brian, if you could just remember to
Yep.
to connect with Mark to get it out to us, and then we could follow up with our other contacts within the state. So, okay, great. Well, obviously, I mean, each day is a better day with the stormwater. It seems like we're getting more projects done. The current list is here. There's like three really big ones that are pending to be started. South Spring, MLK, the Lakeview Drive, and then the Lime Street in Huey Ave. Lime Street in Huey Ave is just a complete mess at night. I mean, you don't know where the land stops, where the curves are, where the water is, where the road is or anything. So I'm really looking forward to seeing that one come to fruition and be completed. So thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Is that it? Commissioner Carr?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Eisen.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for what you're doing. I appreciate this. I have a question for you. You made mention that this has been sitting on a shelf since ninety-three. Is that correct?
No, that was in reference to the first stormwater master plan that was created for the city was created nineteen ninety-three.
And what was done back then?
So that was part of the problem. They, that once the master plan was created, there was no fiscal plan for the actual implementation of design or construction for those proposed improvements that came out of the master plan. So the master plan kind of sat there dormant, collected dust. And so there was a time period there where the city was just being reactive, trying to, you know, do what they could in the field with with resolving the problems that were there. Then Bob Robertson in two thousand and eight said, let's, we need to create a stormwater capital improvement program that's more of a living document that doesn't sit on the, once it's created, it just sits on someone's desk for years. It's updated annually to capture these annual design and construction budgets.
Yes, because I was going through some of these projects. I know you have thirty-four projects completed. As of when, when was that started and when was that, when was the thirty-four projects started?
Two thousand and nine.
So from two thousand and nine, you have thirty-four projects, because we do have still thirty-seven projects that are going that that need to be done right now. And those didn't appear yesterday. They've been an issue for as long as 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 Tarpon's been here. I mean, they've been flooded. So I'm just curious, how many projects do you expect to try to tackle per year?
That, well, that's a good, that's a good question. Thankfully, we have the right folks here to help us answer that question. They're giving you a presentation on that following me, but it's obviously tied to the amount of capital funds that can be allocated to those capital improvement projects.
Why I ask this question, because as Vice Mayor asked or stated earlier, as these prices keep going up fifteen percent, it's like, when I look at this, I look at a can kicked down the road, and it's landing on this board to decide what to do with it. You know, it's very difficult. I mean, I'm looking at, you know, places like Riverside that I live there, and I know that's been a flooding issue for just the longest, longest time. So, I mean, I appreciate what you're doing. So, I mean, I appreciate what you're doing. I just see huge price tags on here, and I just don't know how this sat for so long with so little getting done prior to the '08. You know what I mean? It just, I just can't get my head around that. It's like it was just about left. So, thank you for what you're doing. I support what you're going to do, and if there's anything I can do to help, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Cullyas.
Mr. Anderson, thank you for the PowerPoint presentation. For me, it was easy or helpful to digest in the way you laid it out for us. You know, this living document is, and thank you for stressing the importance of updating it annually. You've given us a good direction that, as long, as well as city staff, as the years come up and priority changes, you know, with the cost benefits in certain areas that gives this board and staff a better direction each year to tackle certain projects. And this issue is one of the biggest issues that this board would say that we try to take care of, you know, however many projects we do each year. And just thank you for everything you guys did to put together, and now it's our time to implement it as things evolve. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thanks for the presentation. You know, going back to 93, that's about when I started with the city, and I can tell you, there were some significant stormwater projects done. The intersection of Tarpon Avenue and Safford, you needed a canoe to get there. That was done when the Penniles Trail went in. There's not even a drop of water there. That was probably the worst flooding location in the whole town. Also, Live Oak Street was put in with new retention ponds and everything, and there were some other places done up behind, north of, I'm sorry, east of Distant with retention ponds. So it wasn't like nothing was getting done. And also, but you're right, the studies were done and they get put on the shelf, and one of the main reasons was we had $400,000 in reserves at the time. The other thing that has contributed to flooding is we've done away with brick streets and have gone to asphalt. That, to me, was a big mistake, but that's for the sake of expediency, we did that. And as a result, you know, as you know, there's some, there's some, from the brick street perspective, there's some permeability to that as far as absorbing water, whether it's the asphalt or it's not. So, but I agree with you, the geography is very challenging in Tarpon Springs, and it's just a matter of priorities and how fast you want to do this. So the best that we can do right now is continue to do this in a very methodical way and hopefully get there. We've got the environment that's working against us with the sunny day tides and creating new challenges for us as we go along there. So I appreciate what you've done, and I just hope to continue, notwithstanding what's happened in the past. So what we need to do is have a motion to approve, to approve this, right?
Yeah.
Let me, let me go to the commission, the public comments. Public comments. Is there anybody that has any public comments on this item? IT, is there any remote access public comments?
If anyone online would like to comment on this item, please raise your hand, and you'll be allowed in to talk. And we do have raised hands, so I'll allow the first person in.
DeLakas 514 Ashland Avenue, Tarpon Springs. One thing I'd like to point out, this was a good presentation, but it's all dealing with issues from the past. Wetlands being filled in, the gentleman also mentioned about the unique topography. But I'd like to point out the possibility of using some of this information on a future basis, and how do I suggest that? One, for any new construction, whether it's single-family home, multifamily, commercial, you need to have them do some kind of impervious surface mitigation fee, because it's the impervious surfaces that create so much of the stormwater. Also, where are they putting these projects? Are they moving wetlands or areas that were former wetlands or areas that drain into wetlands? So you need to look at where people are now going to be building or putting in new structures. But the thing that I would like to impart is, if you're looking at like on number 18 for hurricane flooding, well, you're also taking a preventative measure with regards to your stormwater action funding by having some kind of a mitigation fee. So when you come in and you build, if you're going to build over 50% or come up with some reasonable impervious surface level, then after that, you pay a certain mitigation fee, especially if you're in an area that's been identified as one of these areas that are already shown on your GIS surveys and your studies that are already currently flood dangerous. So it can be worked out. It would take some data to figure out certain areas that would be needing to have this done, but you pretty much know your coastal high hazard areas, your level A areas. So it's just another thought of way to reimburse the city back for all these expenses that you're having to do after the fact, and it's more preventative. On page 26 of the report, there's a scoring criteria. Some of that can be also used in not only using for your projects, but also for deciding what properties being developed would need to be requiring paying the fee. So there's ways to do it, but you can also use this information to look forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DeLakas. Okay. There any other comments, Mr. Trump?
We do not have any other raised hands at this time.
Let's go back to the commission. May I have a motion in a second, please?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Cullyas?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lunt?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticiars?
Yes. Thank you. Item 11, approved stormwater revenue, revenue sufficiency study, City Managerial Corps.
Yes. Ron Harry will come up and introduce our guest to present this.
Good evening, Mayor. Commissioners, now you heard about the stormwater action plan. Now we're getting into the funding of the stormwater plan. In fiscal 2022, the city approved having a stormwater revenue sufficiency study performed. The last study was performed in 2017. The studies have been performed for a number of years, first by Burton and Associates, which was folded under Stan Tech. The same employees that work for Burton and Associates have been working for the city at Tarpon Springs for 20-plus years, so they have a lot of knowledge with the city and our processes. Andy Burnham here, you might remember him. He did our water and sewer stormwater study just a couple years ago. He's the Vice President and Director of Management with Stan Tech, and is here to present this year's study, and with him is Kevin Cook, his assistant. I'll give it to Andy.
Thanks, Ron. Good evening. Thanks for giving me about 10 minutes of your time to present this year's revenue sufficiency analysis for the stormwater system that really builds on the stormwater action plan discussion that we were just having. So let me make sure I've got the directional cues on this going the right way. So by way of background for the stormwater system, as Ron had mentioned, the current rate plan that's in place for stormwater was adopted back in 2015, and at that time, it established a 10-year plan of increases to your current stormwater fee of about 50 cents per year to that fee for a 10-year time period. That plan was then reevaluated in 2017 to take into account then-current conditions, changes in operating costs, inflation factors, as well as capital improvement needs. At that point in time, that 2017 update largely confirmed the findings that based upon those levels of expenditures and trends at the current rate plan that had been approved a couple of years before was going to continue to be sufficient. One thing that's important to note is that that increase plan that started in 2015, those were the first increases to the fee that had been previously adopted in 2001, so implemented in 2002. So this may explain some of the gaps that you're hearing about timing in terms of infrastructure plans. A dedicated funding source really wasn't established until about 2002, wasn't adjusted for the first time until actually fiscal year 2016. So there are some important marks that, well, I think maybe explain some of those funding issues that had been talked about a moment ago. And for all these updates that we've run, we've been looking at kind of a pay-as-you-go model for the infrastructure improvements, leveraging grant resources as well as the dedicated funds from the stormwater fee to cover our maintenance as well as capital needs for the stormwater system. So taking that 50-cent rate plan that had been identified or unadjusted and putting it into context, that initial fee that was adopted in 2001 and implemented in 2002 was $5.65 per month for stormwater costs to cover the infrastructure that was addressed by the prior speaker as well as the maintenance of that infrastructure. And so that 50 cents represented about an 8.85% increase, that first increase when it was imposed in fiscal year 16. But over time, as that fee has gradually increased over time, you can see that percentage increase it's represented is now down to around about 5% is the level of increase that your current stormwater fees that are approved through fiscal '25 represent to your utility rates and to your utility bills. So as we look at this year's revenue sufficiency analysis, you know, we always want to start with some reconciliation. And so we looked at the forecast that we'd done in 2017 for the time period that overlapped, 2022 to 2027. It takes stock of the projections from the past study versus the current projections for that time period. And what we noticed is that on the funding side, we're in a pretty good position and consistent with prior predictions. We have a fund balance that's fairly comparable to what we were projecting before, and the revenues are very consistent with the past projections. On a $2 million budget, we're within about $3,000 on the revenue side. It's the expenditure side where we're seeing pressure begin to mount as compared to that 2017 update that's now about five years old. We're seeing increases in costs associated with supply chain issues and material costs that have gone up, that has just been spoken about in the prior presentation, as well as labor shortages affecting our ability to affect projects. Additionally, we're seeing increasing regulations and mandates, and our infrastructure is obviously getting older. So a lot of the things that we've been talking about. And so we are seeing some pressure building from those dynamics as we incorporate them into this year's analysis. And specifically breaking down the operating cost and the minor capital outlay increases, just wanted to give you a sense of some of the updates. As many of you are aware from the discussion we had last year about the Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund, we look at performance versus budget and take stock of how we're actually spending versus our budgets and calibrate our inflation factors as well as spending assumptions on those budgets. So for personnel, we're coming in very close to budget. So previously, we had a 2% savings. Right now, we're spending and fully staffed on the stormwater side. And additionally, in our forecast, we have included two new positions in '24 and in '27 for additional techs to help with the maintenance and related activities for the stormwater management system. So on personnel, over this entire 10-year time period, we're looking at about an additional $1.1 million of increased cost on the operations and expense side versus through 2032. On O&amp;M, outside of personal services, we had been looking at an execution rate at about 98%. We've adjusted that to reflect 97% based upon the recent performance we've been seeing and discussions with staff. And we've also factored in additional leases for street sweepers in 2023 and 2028. So we're looking at added cost of about $840,000 over this current 10-year projection of O&amp;M expenses above what we were looking at previously. And lastly, on minor capital outlays for machinery and equipment, we're looking at purchases there that are on average about $130,000 more per year, about $1.5 million over that 10-year time period in round numbers. And so we're also looking at the inflation rates, and we're seeing higher inflationary increases in current expenses that we've been factoring into this forecast. So the outlook continues those trends for a brief period of time and then normalizes them back to historical levels. But on average, we're looking at about a 4.6% increase in just our operating costs to address a lot of those inflationary pressures that we've been talking about in various aspects of public services. The capital spending plan that's been included in the analysis, again, it builds off of the stormwater action plan that was just discussed. We have reflected historical spend rates versus budgets that are ranged between 60 and 70% of spending versus budget amounts. And also importantly, we factored in continued grant funding for a variety of projects. So over this entire 10-year time period, it's about $5.8 million of capital cost. We've presently included about $1.7 million of assumed grant funding for that capital improvement cost, which is a pretty high proportion of funding from grants as part of the forecast. A few things to note, because of the supply chain issues and other procurement delays that we've seen in '22, that capital's been rolled over in '23, and we have factored in an additional 8% increase in those capital costs associated with that rollover. And additionally, on top of that contingency allowance that Brian had mentioned, we factored in a 3% additional increase compounded inflation cost year over year as part of the forecast on our capital. So what we're funding with the current rate trajectory that we have is about $600,000 a year, a little less than that, of annual capital spending in the financial forecast. We do have a project-specific list that may be hard to see on the screen, but it goes to one of the questions about how many projects we're doing per year. Depends on the size of the projects. That $600,000 could get us anywhere from maybe three projects in a particular year or a very large one, potentially four. And then we're also doing some miscellaneous improvements as part of this program as well. $50,000 a year in allowances for, you know, various miscellaneous services and repairs that we need to make to the system as part of this program. To the extent we want to look at accelerating that capital program, you know, I can give you kind of a rule of thumb, we're about $2 million of revenue for this system each year. So if you wanted to add an extra $200,000 to your capital plan and cash fund that, that's going to be about an extra 10% increase on the rates. So just keep that in mind, if you as an elected body and policymakers want to try to accelerate capital, just you have kind of a rule of thumb that you can work with here in terms of an additional $200,000 would be about 10% on the rates. And that would be a sustained year-over-year investment. So we use our financial analysis and management system to run a variety of scenarios and simulations with staff. It's where we do the analysis of all the historical trends, look at assumptions such as spending rates on O&amp;M and capital, and look at the different rate adjustment plans. And so what this screen capture, this scenario is showing is the status quo. We have the rate increase plan approved through fiscal year '25, and then we said, well, what if we don't do anything further after that based upon the information we have today on inflation factors and capital spending? And what we saw quickly is that we would actually run out of reserves very quickly in this scenario, because we're looking at sustained levels of capital investment over this time period, and it's such that we would have continued expenses going out greater than our cash coming in. And so we wouldn't have much time if we were to continue with this capital improvement program and the operating cost trajectories that we're on to be able to have a sustainable enterprise fund. We just would not be able to do that. So we then looked at what would the forecast be today, based upon what we know today, the assumptions we've made on grant funding, the assumptions we've made on inflation, as well as the skip-end rate on that capital improvement program, to say what would a sustainable financial plan look like based on those assumptions? And really, what it reflects is a continuation for a couple of years of about those 5% or 50 cent increases on the rate, and then continuing with some sort of inflationary indexing. And this is all predicated on the timing of the capital projects that we mentioned and the assumed grant funding for those capital projects, about $1.7 million over this time period. To the extent that either of those change, obviously, that would have a pretty dramatic impact on this fund, because we're working with a very minimal level of reserves here, about 25% of our O&amp;M budget. So it's just a few hundred thousand dollars of reserves in this fund. So we don't have a lot of leeway, if you will, to deal with unforeseen circumstances occurring differently than projected. So what we're looking at, again, just kind of taking the three years that have been approved and that remain in the current approved resolution and what we're showing in the forecast, you know, we'd be looking at about 50 cent increases in that stormwater rate to sustain this level of capital spending, and then thereafter, about 2.5% a year, which would equate to about 29 to 30 cents on that stormwater utility bill. So you can see what that means going from the current rate in fiscal '23 of 9.65, you know, that would take us up to 10.15, 10.65, and, you know, by 2032, that would take us to about $13.28. And I think, you know, this trajectory is good to know in terms of what it's supporting from a capital investment perspective, but I think it's also important to understand it in the context of some local benchmarks. And so as Ron mentioned, we do a lot of this work for not only communities in this area, but really across the country. And so we've updated a stormwater monthly fee survey. We're actually going to present this about a month ago to you in fiscal '22, but we had Hurricane Ian to contend with, so we're here today. So this showed generally at the time, the fiscal year '22 rates for many neighboring agencies. And so you can see the orange highlighted bars where Tarpon Springs sits with its current stormwater charges. And this was as of fiscal year '22. Since that time, we've seen increases from Oldsmar, they've gone up from $6 to $8 in fiscal year '23. The city of Largo has moved from $8.91 to about $10.70 in fiscal '23, so about $2 increases for each of those. St. Pete's gone up about 15%, so they've gone from about $12.50 to around $14.50 on their bill. And then we've also seen Gulfport approve a three-year ordinance, no increase this year, but then $2 in fiscal year '24, and then a dollar increase in '25. And then some of the agencies that are already kind of at the higher end, they're looking at indexing plans to sustain what they have. Dunedin's at about a percent and a half a year, so is Clearwater at about 1.75. So you kind of get the ideas that there's upward movement in this survey to pretty So you kind of get the ideas that there's upward movement in this survey to pretty significant degrees as many agencies try to take an opportunity to have a dedicated funding source for stormwater, and they're facing the same challenges in that regard that the city of Tarpon Springs is as well. So I do this to give you a good sense of where you stand on these benchmarks, and you're very comparable in cost today. And if you continue with a plan that's in place today and extending it, I think you're going to find you're going to be very comparable in cost to communities over time, based on what we're seeing with their trends on rates. So just to wrap up, I think, you know, from our perspective, with the level of capital planning that we have now for the next three years, as well as the grant assumptions and O and M assumptions with that, the current rate plan should hold. So I think we're in good condition there. But to the extent that there's changes, whether it's increasing the capital plan above that, further disruptions that cause greater inflation and cost beyond what's been included in the project basis, that may not hold. And especially looking beyond that 2025 time period, you need to be thinking about, what do we do next? What's that next step and that next increment look like to sustain this level of investment? Because what we're seeing is with the trends in cost, we're not going to be able to support that with then-current rates. We're going to have to look at some levels of increases to sustain the capital improvement spending needs that we have, as well as deal with the operations and maintenance needs of the system as costs continue to increase. So that capital spending is going to be a big decision point, and I think there's a number of unknowns here that merit thinking about, how often do we want to look at our financial performance for stormwater? Grant funding, I was chatting with Paul Smith just as part of the discussion tonight. We're seeing a little bit more movement in a positive direction on more grant programs, more funds being available, and that could be a good thing. There may be an opportunity there that we could maybe have more grant funding than what we're assuming in the forecast. There could be positive dynamics to factor into this forecast, not just negative. So I don't want to be just all doom and gloom at this podium today. I think there's opportunity for changes that need to be factored into this. I think there's more risk than there is upside right now, being perfectly candid, but there's a lot of uncertainty. And so our recommendations are to stay the course with what you have now, but think about updating this, doing moderate updates, not necessarily full comprehensive studies to support new rate plans, but just do health checks, financial health checks on this because there's a lot of moving parts right now. So with that, I appreciate your opportunity to present to you and would welcome any comments from the board, as well as the public, and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. It was an excellent presentation. What I'm going to do is go to public comments. Are there any public comments? Mr. Jump, are there any remote access public comments?
If anyone online would like to speak on this item, please raise your hand. You'll be allowed in to talk. And do not have any raised hands at this time.
Thank you. Let's go to commission comments. Vice Mayor Lunt.
So we seem to be at significant risk of depleting our reserves for this in what seems to me to be a very short timeframe. Given the path that we may be able to make it, may be able to make it, to fiscal year 2026, that's only a couple of years off. I'm not really happy about that. From a personal situation, I believe the citizens of this community would rather see us in a better position as far as stormwater and flooding. Excuse me. My thoughts on the matter is, what I'd like to hear is suggestions as not to take a look at this in 2026, but what we can do to have a very positive effect within a very short timeframe so that we can actually feel comfortable getting back to our constituents and saying, we're working to solve the flooding and stormwater problems in this town. And whether that means, you know, we're going to have to accommodate it with other funds for CIP, or additional grants, or raising the stormwater fees, we need to do that. What I'd like to see is a recommendation on how aggressive we could be and what that would mean for our city in the relatively short term, say by fiscal year '24.
Thank you. Commissioner Carr.
Yeah, I mean, I'm pretty sure you just outlined it all in your presentation, so I'm happy with that presentation. He said basically, if you want to extend the fund, you have to do five percent after '26, and you could go to two-and-a-half percent. So it's there. There's a lot of good work that's behind this. I'm not interested in raising taxes, if raising fees, but at the end of the day, we have to follow inflation at times. We need more stormwater projects. So yes, the fees will have to increase as years go on past '26, but that's something we don't have to worry about today. We've got to outline, we're good based on your presentation until '26. At that point, when the additional fees go into play, you guys could set a new increase year-over-year at that time and move forward from there and still have enough of a fund. Something to be aware of is there's a lot of reserve funds that the city has that just sit there. I'm not a big fan of just having reserve funds in all different departments. Like, we have one large reserve fund with over $8 million in it. There's another fund here with a couple hundred thousand dollars in it. I think the water has another reserve fund. There's a sidewalk reserve fund. So there's a lot of money just sitting in reserve funds, and I would rather see those funds utilized instead of sitting in reserve funds, and we have other assets that we could use as reserves to fill in and then backfill if we need to as well. So appreciate it. Thanks.
Commissioner Eisner.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm also not in favor of raising, you know, the rates any more than they already are, but it also concerns me that we're going to run out of money. So I don't know, is this something that we can put out as a referendum where the city residents decide what they would prefer to do? Or is that something that...
They're going to say they want the flooding fixed, is what they say.
I know that part. But they're the ones paying the bill. I mean, for me personally, it doesn't matter. I don't have, I'm not affected by that, but I'm very sensitive to the people that have been trying to make ends meet. And, you know, I just don't want to see that, you know, we spoke earlier about the millage rate, and now we're discussing, you know, this. So, you know, I know it needs to get done, and I want to do the job that we need to do, but I also need to know where that money's coming from. Just speaking about having reserves, are the reserves able to be used for this, is the question, city manager? I mean, that's, you know, just saying it doesn't mean, you know, we do need to keep a certain amount of reserves. So this is a decision that I don't particularly want to make. I will, will if I have to, but I would prefer if the residents made that decision of how they want it to go forward. So that's my comment. Thank you. Do you want to say anything?
I just want to say, again, all those are able to be taken into consideration. I really emphasize what he says about the positive. I really think from what I'm seeing, and I know what they're seeing and what I'm hearing, that grant funding and the funding that might be coming forward for this might take us in the positive and not, but again, we can't wait till 2025, 2026. Again, we need to look at it next year, see where that trend's going, and I'm hoping we can put more of that positive money out there with the additional grant riders we have, with what we've done so far. You know, I think that's going to be our effort, trying to bring forward that positive money to offset the negative money, the cost increases. And we need to watch it closely, and we need to wait till the last minute. But I think we'll have a better handle on it the next year, and I think we're going to see some positive funding coming in. So we all need to keep it on our radar, on our attention, and deal with it sooner than later, but I think we may have some of those positive things coming forward.
So my other question to you is, does it help us if we were to handle more of the smaller projects and get a lot of them off of our plate so it doesn't look as bad? Because, I mean, there's a lot of different, I've looked at some of the prices on here, some of them are very easily doable, and some of them are outlandish, so.
Yeah, it's an interesting question, and I think it comes back to that scoring criteria that was mentioned as well in terms of, you could go ahead and try to accrue money for a couple of years to do some really big projects that would have a major impact. But at the same point in time, if you're accruing money for those large projects, that means you're accruing it, and you're not doing anything for a couple of years. So it's that balancing of showing progress, making investments in the community, at the same point in time accomplishing some of those major projects. And I think that's where the grant programs have been really effective, to give you some money to do some of those bigger projects, as has been highlighted in the past, and then use the stormwater dollars to try to accomplish some more of these more modest projects. And I think that's consistent with what you're seeing in the capital plan, is that type of a strategy. It's not to say you couldn't do it differently, but it's trying to accomplish really both, the larger-scale kind of neighborhood-level-type projects and then the street-level-type projects.
Well, that's what I was more so going after, you know, where we can get some of these smaller projects done and then do grants for the larger projects. I'm not picking and choosing because I know there's, the larger projects are larger headaches as well. But those at least, we can portray better for grant money than having a smaller project. So thank you for what you do, and, like I said, I don't want to have to make that call. I don't want to increase to the residents, but if all else fails, that's what you have to do. So, thank you.
Just for clarification, we're already scheduled for annual increases over the next three years.
That's correct, through fiscal year '25. Yes, sir.
Okay. Commissioner Kuyas.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation, and, you know, at times I sit there and talked about lowering the millage rate, and I look at this, I just want to make sure our city's in a good situation to be well-funded for these projects coming up. And when I see other nearby cities have raised their monthly fee a couple of dollars, I sort of wouldn't mind, you know, coming back to reevaluate it here in a year or so to see what, you know, I want us to have some good reserves to focus on some projects and really tackle these issues that the residents want us to. So I would, I see the fifty percent, or the fifty cent increase each year, but I think that may have to increase a little bit more, and that's something for us to consider in the next year or two, to have some reserves built up for these projects that we want to tackle here in the future. So thank you for everything.
I mean, even 10%, 15% isn't going to, increases aren't going to make a dent. I mean, $575,000, given some of the price tags of some of the projects you see is, I mean, this isn't, this stormwater fund isn't what's going to solve the flooding in the town. I mean, we talked about bonds, I think of revenue in your note, I think Mr. Herring talked about that at one point, as far as for the larger ones, if we don't get the grants, I think the city manager knows you can't wait forever for a grant. I mean, people aren't going to, I mean, it's going to be cheaper for us to issue masks and snorkels at some point than it is to get the flooding done. So I think that we probably, I'm not sure, we do the sufficiency rate study, and, you know, one thing I was thinking about is maybe bumping that up to 2025 if we're concerned about, you know, becoming insolvent in the stormwater fund, something similar to what we were talking about with the, what was it, the waste management, that we're going to do it every, or was that the sewer? That was a sewer impact fee, right? We're going to do it every two years. Okay. But the other thing is that we may want to find a consultant that, if the commission is very, very interested in how do you tackle, you know, you know, this elephant that we've got with a flyswatter source of revenue, we might want to hire a consultant to perhaps take a look at it from a strategy, a financing and investment strategy as far as how do you deal with this? In other words, if we've got a 10-year horizon, and that's when we want to complete all these stormwater projects, what is it going to take if we can take, if it can be done? That's maybe something to think about. I think for tonight, we've satisfied our purposes for what we need to do. I wouldn't, unless there's something that happens between now and 2026, maybe we should just stick with the schedule of the sufficiency update being done, 2026, is that what you said?
That would be when you would need a new rate to go in place, so then you would want to conduct that study, you know, no later than 2025.
In 2025, maybe?
Correct.
Okay, maybe that's what we should do. And then I would take maybe, maybe about a month for yourselves and kind of think over, maybe we should talk about a consultant. We could put that in a tickler.
Ron Herring. That's who we...
He's the consultant? He's chief, too, isn't he?
He's our magician.
All right. All right. Oh, good.
Sorry.
Remember that, Mr. Herring. Okay, well, for the sake of moving ahead this evening, the commissioners, do any of you have any follow-up comments you want to say?
Yeah, I do, actually. I'm more concerned that we don't just kind of move this down the road too many years. The compound inflation rate since 2015, since the inception of the last thing, has been over 25%. That was up to the beginning of 2022. I'm not exactly sure what the inflation rate barreled out into the end of this year, but I think it was somewhere at least between 10 and 13%. So this is, if we took a look at this next year, it's going to be all that much more worse. And we, I think as a policy, we need to get on this now before we end up two years down the road going like we're out of reserves.
That's what I'm getting at. I think we need a bigger picture of this thing than what we're doing with this revenue stream. I think that's what you're saying.
Yes.
Okay. So maybe within this month, y'all have, you have some conversations with the city manager, and all kidding aside from Mr. Herring, as far as a consultant, there are people that help us with the strategy in creating something so we can deal with this. But at least this gives you, this fund was created in 2001, is that correct?
That was when the stormwater fee was first approved.
Right, 2001, and kind of prior to that time, you basically took it from your capital project and have, you know, you had to do everything else at the same time, so.
There.
Yes, go ahead.
Isn't that what Stan Tech does, though? Isn't that what he did tonight, and isn't that what they do?
The strategy?
A consultant at the same point?
They may, I mean, we kind of got into that with the stormwater, you know, the stormwater impact, was it the stormwater impact fee?
Water and sewer rates was where we went into that.
Right, the rate study, and we talked about that sort of thing as well. And, I mean, the answer is yes or no. Do you do it?
Yeah, the answer is yes. And so what we could add to that conversation is just some of the strategies that the other local communities have done to rely on, you know, penny-for-Pennellis money or other ways to ramp up the fee or financing mechanisms, whether it's interim financing or banknotes. So, but these are all strategies that, you know, Ron's going to certainly have some familiarity with, too, and we can bring a lot of that local knowledge to bear to give you some options, so.
You're on a, is it a multi-year contract that you're on with us as far as?
We do have a multi-year contract that covers the water and sewer in particular, and I think we have other, just general vehicles that we can use, too.
Well, maybe that's something the city manager can look into a little further.
Yes.
Sorry?
Yes.
Okay. And y'all, I'm still inviting the commission, as you should, talk to the city manager, and he could probably get some information for you and kind of get a sense of how we approach For this evening's, you want the sufficiency study approved, is this, Mr. Herring?
To accept the report, yes.
Accept the report, but with recommendations or there are no changes, right? Just with, you've got some recommendations listed. Are you asking us to approve those or think about those?
Just really to accept the report, and the recommendations are to come back and look at this in a couple of years to develop a new plan going forward. So that's very consistent with this discussion.
They're part of the report, the recommendations.
That's correct, they are.
All right, why don't we do that, then? May I have a motion in a second, please?
Motion to accept the report.
Second.
Okay, roll call.
Mr. Kuyas?
Yes.
Mr. Eisner?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lunt?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticios?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item, 12, is the project update and direction.
Yes, Brian Balfour, I think this item's been bumped twice, one due to the full agenda and then the hurricane knocked it. So for the third time's the charm, an update on our, on our projects.
Thank you, Mark. Bob Robertson, Project Administration Department Director, and for this item, I'm going to provide some project updates highlighting some of the higher-profile projects. I'll keep my projects, my comments brief. As a reminder to you and the public, we keep a project update spreadsheet on the city website, and we update that weekly. Browse to the city site or simply Google search the keywords Tarpon Springs projects, and it's usually the first thing that pops up, so reminder on that. We manage, monitor, and track currently 42 projects. I'm going to highlight, it looks like I got about 11 on the list here, so I'll get through them quickly here. The first is the Ancoat River dredge. We are facing a delay on that project thanks to the hurricane, not because we saw damage to any of the infrastructure or the work that's been done here in the city, but because the contractor, who's the primary sub, who's doing the excavation work and the land movement is, well, they're based in Fort Myers, so they saw some damage. well, they're based in Fort Myers, so they saw some damage. So we're targeting December for start of dredge activities. And in the coming months, the Army Corps project manager is going to come back to this board and give you all an update on the dredging of the outer cuts. That date is uncertain at this time, but I'll let you know when that, when that's to become, when that comes. Next one is the Pent Gross Stormwater Project. This is the project out here by City Hall that, where we had the contractor walk off the project and we've worked through our claim with the surety. They have received proposals for the recovery or takeover contractor. We have not seen those yet and I don't have a time, clear timeline on when we're going to get those, but there has been some progress on that one, and of course, I will let you all know. The next one I'll touch on is the Orange Street Rebrick Project. That's from Ring all the way to Alt 19. We have a draft analysis that we've received, currently reviewing on the staff level. We're preparing a public information package that will put on Connect Tarpon Springs to get some public input and we'll bring it to the BOC probably early next year to discuss alternatives. Highlight the Clerks Office Construction. Our contractor is conscientious and they're aware of the disruption that this project's going to cause when they get moving here. So what they're doing is they're working to secure all of the materials and long lead items before they mobilize. We know that's going to be disruptive here on the City Hall campus. The idea here is to build it in a continuous effort to reduce the risk of material shortages during construction. First action we're going to see on this is probably in about three months or so where they begin clearing and preparing the parking lot on the very south end here of the City Hall campus. And I'll send a notice when that gets closer. Touch on the Tarpon Avenue Roadway Project, that's progressing very quickly. If you notice the work that's happening out there, that's all since the hurricane, so they're definitely making quick strides. The Seabreeze Drive Sewer Project. On that one, most of the pipeline work is now complete and most of the paving. It's about 75, maybe 80% of it, with the final section of pipeline and lift station work is to come here. I want to note that it has taken quite a lot longer than we expected, this project has, primarily due to some unexpected subsurface conditions that caused some very difficult de-watering and excavation issues. So I will be preparing a change order with a detailed memo explaining what we need. That's also going to include some FEMA reimbursable project expenses that were incurred as a result of preparing for and demobilizing and remobilizing as a result of the hurricane. Going to the Craig Park Seawall. While we await the determination of a possible $2 million federal grant for the seawall and sidewalk upgrades at Craig Park, I'm going to be preparing a memo outlining some optimization and funding options for this project that the mayor alluded to earlier in the meeting. I expect to have this to you in November. We think we can reduce the scope of the project somewhat while still maintaining the intent of the project and make better use of the ARPA funds. We're going to need to close that gap, and I think we'll probably talk about that more when we get to ARPA later. Touch on the Lemon and Shattuck Product, Project. That brick and stormwater project is, design is complete. We're working through some final stormwater design considerations before we put it out to bid, probably next month. Just a few more here. Witcomb Bayou, this is the project we're working with Arcadis. The next phase of that work with Arcadis is going to begin soon. This phase, as was presented to the previous board, asks Arcadis to complete more detailed designs so that they can use that to submit for grant funding. A couple of important notes on this one. First is that FEMA has changed its BRIC scoring rubric, that B-R-I-C, that was the brick grant that we originally thought we were going to pursue. They've, they're now enhancing categories that our project does not include. So what that means is, well, Arcadis is advising that our chances for getting a brick grant are very low. However, there is, there will be FEMA HMGP grant money available in the coming period in the wake of Hurricane Ian, and Arcadis is going to be targeting that, so that's what we're going to be working towards here. And a reminder to keep in mind that there will be a city match of some amount required for most grants, typically ranging from 10 to 25%, and that has not been determined yet on the HMGP. I'm going to be preparing an analysis memo to send to you to try to take some time to unpack all this. There's a lot that I just said, and I want to explain our options a little more as we move forward coming up in the next month or so. Couple more here to wrap up. The Martin Luther King South Spring Boulevard Intersection Project. The design is at 60% and moving along, 50 to 60%. I'm hoping we can put it out in January to bid. I'm well aware that there's a concern about the timing of this project related to the Beckett Bridge Project. And at this point, all indications are that our project will be completed before that project starts at the end of next year. And I can give you some more updates on that if we need to. And finally, I want to touch on a couple of CRA items for you. The jitney display garage and the railroad semaphore arm restoration projects. The jitney design and construction cost estimate is $150,000. We have $100,000 set aside for that project. And the semaphore restoration with a fresh powder coat and the signal arm, restored signal arm, construction cost is $25,000, where we had set aside $55,000 for that one. So that's a total of $175,000, and we've got 155 allocated. We want to make sure the board is comfortable with us moving forward with both of those projects. And we will be bringing this back to the CRA for approval and you'll get to see the final design before we put it out to bid. If there needs to be an extended discussion about this one, it's going to have to be a CRA item, Mark, if you want to discuss that any further. But just wanted to mention those two. That's really the only question we had for the board on these items tonight. So that's summary, that captures 11 projects in 13 minutes? Hope I did okay there. Back to you, Mayor.
Well, it was great. All presentations ought to be like that.
I try.
Let's go to public comment. Are there any public comments this evening, the four of you that are here? Mr. Jump, are there any remote access comments?
If anyone online would like to speak on the side, please raise your hand and we'll be allowed in to talk. And we do not have any raised hands at this time.
Thank you. Let's go to commission comments. Vice Mayor Lot?
Yeah, hi, Bob. Great review. I'd like a little more detail on what's going on with Beckett Bridge. I get a lot of questions about that, maybe because I live in the area, but a lot of people come up to me and ask me for current status. It seems to me that we're hung up with some easement issues. Is that not going well? Is it, who's negotiating with this homeowner? Is it our, our legal team obviously is not anymore?
So we have resolved all of our easement issues. We've taken care of all the ones that we need to do. Those are related to the water and wastewater piping that we need to take care of. So our issues are resolved in that respect. I know the county's still working some of, through some of their own. And also, the update I gave you, I think I reported last time that the county is applying for a grant. And that's still true. They submitted that grant application in September and they included our infrastructure in that grant, which we were very excited about because we were going to have to pay a lot of money to relocate those pipes. That may still be true.
Yeah.
We may not get that grant, but that is part of what the county is waiting on, is what they hear from on this grant. And as far as I know, we're still looking at the end of next year for them to start construction. There's a lot of things that.
It's actually the county that's working on the homeowners? This is, this is my concern because, I don't know, a month or two ago, they surveyed the area and you saw the right-of-way survey stakes and quite frankly, they ran through quite a few yards. So I'm assuming that there's more than one homeowner involved here that's not quite happy that he's just going to be impinged upon. And I'm concerned that this is going to, I don't know, get to a point where it may fall into an eminent domain thing. And I'd rather not see that for our citizens.
Sure, I understand that. And my understanding, I don't want to speak for the county too much here, but my understanding is mostly what they need are temporary construction easements. They're not buying more roadway to build a wider road. So they're talking about being able to, some trees that need to be removed that are in the right-of-way, they're in the way of drainage, the new drainage system that's coming in. And that's part of what they're looking for. More detail beyond that I don't have for you.
Yeah, we don't seem to get a lot of detail from the county as far as their progress on this. If you go to their website and search through their site, we don't see a lot of detail at all. And that, that actually concerns me, too. Is there, do we have a, or is it you that's the day-to-day liaison with Pinellas? Is there a reason for them not giving us any more information or do they just not care?
Well, I would say that, first of all, yes, I'm the liaison and I meet roughly every two weeks with the project manager, with the county, to share information and check in with things. They're, for legal reasons, they don't share a lot of the information about ongoing negotiations. They can't do that, they can't share that with me. But that's why I showed you, told you what I know is what I, you know, is based on what they are able to share. So it's, you know, we're doing the best we can to share information.
All right.
But we can try to get some updates, especially under concern of the property stuff. See if we can get some update of what they can tell us if they're near, closed, just waiting to sign the agreements, have any holdup, let's try to find that information and get it back for the commission.
Yeah, and their project manager has addressed this board in the past, but not this board, but previous boards. And I'm sure they would be willing to do that at some point, again.
That's, that's actually the only thing I had detail on. I get questioned a lot, so.
Sure, yeah.
Appreciate it. No more questions. Just a question, they don't have the design complete yet, is that correct?
They, they do have most of it complete, yes.
So the, but they haven't gotten the funding, they haven't gone for the funding yet?
Right.
Okay. Commissioner Carr?
Thanks. The county is open to having conversations as well to the project manager of the bridge. And then also, I forget, Mr. Washburn, I think is one of the assistant directors, too. So they're well, I mean, if you could reach out to them and they'll be happy to meet with you. I've done that a few times over the past six years. It's a project that's been lingering for quite some time, so it's a needed project and looking forward to, also the drainage to being addressed in that area because the drainage is terrible. Going to the couple items that you asked about with the CRA. I mean, it's $25,000 above what the initial budget was. There's plenty of money in the CRA. I think it's, the $25,000 shouldn't be a problem. Both of those items, one's a restoration of the semaphore arm, which is needed. And the second one is putting a jitney on display, which is also a great asset to show. It's not just sitting back behind the public works collecting dust. So both of those make sense to me. One of the items that is, I see progress working on mirrors, but there's like a small portion of sidewalk that's been missing, like right at the entrance of the waste dump. It's like maybe eight feet. And all the sidewalk's been done for like weeks and it's just this one spot. So I'm not sure if that's someone you could chase on that one and try to figure out what's going on there, but.
That was intentional because they didn't want to destroy that piece of sidewalk when they brought in all the heavy equipment for the, for the scale when they finally place it.
Got it, okay.
They left that off intentionally.
Okay, fair enough. I'll go over some stuff with you individually, so appreciate that update. Thank you.
Is that it?
Yeah.
Okay. Commissioner Eisner?
Thank you, Mayor. Most of my questions I've gone through with Bob Robertson and prior to this, so I really don't have any questions. I do want to, the only thing is, I do want to question the amount of money for that jitney garage as well. I'm going to bring that up. And the, the other comment that we spoke about earlier on the Orange Street about not having it zigzag between Hibiscus and Safford. But other than that, you know, I'm just glad that everything is moving along. And if I have any, you know, other comments, I'll bring them up in private. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good.
Hey, Bob. Thank you, Mayor. Just thank you for putting this all together. It seems like you guys have a lot of work and working with us, how we're going to time these projects out. I would make a recommendation for this board to consider and maybe having the project manager from the Beckett Bridge come to, come to City Hall and speak to us and give us an update if possible collectively, just something.
I've got a note, I've got a note to do that, yeah.
As far as the SpongeDocks Gateway Sign, I know we had some money set to the side. Can this, can this board come to an agreement? Maybe we can cancel the project and try to, you know, reallocate those funds? Is that something this board would want to consider in the future, considering some work that needs to be done in the SpongeDocks prior to a nice sign going in the area? And other than that, you got, you know, you got, you have a lot on your plate and, you know, this, a lot of progress is going to get done with, with this board and it's going to be a challenge. I know we're going to inconvenience a lot of residents, you know, but it's got to get done at some point. So thank you for everything you guys are doing.
Thank you.
When we can, we can add that, tonight is just the, 14, I'm sorry, is the project update and direction. So I'm not sure exactly what you're looking for. One thing we can do is cancel that project officially. So, and I, I think you mentioned it was earlier today, Mr. Robertson, that was some funds associated earmarked for that, that we could release and.
I believe so, Mark, maybe you can add to that.
Yes, right, right now, the, it's on hold with all that we went through.
We had some money earmarked for that.
It's been on hold, the money is still earmarked, but the money at any time can be removed and go to another project.
So let's go ahead and do that tonight, then, if that's acceptable, and we'll do that. And we just, you know, it's, everything's moving along. I mean, it's, there is no shortage of work in Tarpon Springs and, and, you know, I don't mind moving just a tiny bit slowly so we don't make any mistakes. The Beckett Bridge thing is a, there's a, there's a word for it. It's a very complicated project with a lot of.
Moving parts.
Well, I mean, it's two steps forward, one step back. And the, the right-of-way or the construction easements are going to be an issue because I do know that at least one resident, there's some issues with a tree being removed that was planted there by a relative sometime, some years ago. So there's some issues there. I don't have anything more. I see Mr. Robertson and from time to time, and if there's a question, I ask him. I do think that some of the CRA projects we need to talk about as far as the downtown beautification and some other things, we could do that at a, you know, the next CRA meeting that we have. I'm not sure when that's going to be, but I'll leave that up to you.
Again, it'll depend on the agendas when we can.
So why don't we go ahead and, does, do any commissioners have any specific directions that you want to give? Commissioner Eisner, go ahead.
Yes, I wanted to agree with what Commissioner Kuliya said. Some of these projects I'd like to go through and see what we could table, you know, whether it be temporary or permanent, projects that were done in the past that are not pertinent to the well-being of Tarpon Springs. So I'd like to see that the money be put towards things that are more on an emergency basis than just plain beautification. But I'll, I'm going to sit down with the city manager.
Yeah.
And try to make a list up and we'll just go through it and see how the vote goes. If it's good, it's good, if it's not, it's not, so.
Yeah, I think it's good to sit down with the city manager who will get some history, too, on each of the projects. They're not just, what you see on the paper is not the history. There's, they got there by a certain route. So I guess what.
I've got one more to comment.
Yes, go ahead.
I totally understand the gateway sign. I know that was a pass board initiative. The dollar set aside was for something basically very grand. We still have a SpongeDocks that we have zero signage that says SpongeDocks. So you could do something much smaller, much less cost. I think it's like $100,000 that was set aside, Mark, or maybe 125. You could do something for a few thousand dollars at least. Maybe you could talk to the property owners that just puts a small sign out there that says SpongeDocks because you have a significant amount of people that drive by it. At least get something out there, it doesn't have to be super fancy or super elaborate, but just have SpongeDocks written somewhere so people know, at least this is where they're at.
Has anybody looked at what Safety Harbor has done? Their signage as you drive up Philippi Parkway there and you, and you get to their marina area, which is actually the beginning of Safety Harbor from a town point of view. That sign just basically says, "Welcome to Safety Harbor", has a map of, of local attractions or whatever down their main drag and some other bits of community information, and that's it, and it works perfectly. It's, and it doesn't cost $200,000 and required four months of design work.
Right.
So you should really investigate something like that.
Mayor, may I say something?
Yes, please, go ahead.
Now that we brought up the signs, it has been brought to my attention that maybe we should consider having a sign that says, "To the SpongeDocks on US 19", from Live Oak or some, one of those other streets. That way it can help redirect or funnel people to take those roads to get to the SpongeDocks. We do know at times, you know, First Fridays and other events can help. It detours the aspect of getting, going down Tarpon Avenue and going straight to the SpongeDocks. So maybe a sign that's very cost-effective, you know, like a traffic sign to let people know to, this is a route you should be considered.
I agree with you on that. I just, I mean, honestly, we started out the whole discussion with a gateway sign as a simple.
with a Gateway sign as a simple sign, and then next thing you know, ballooned into this Gateway that we were talking about, and I don't know how much time we spent on that, so, it, what I would like to recommend to the commission is that we go ahead and cancel this thing, and then start over, as far as a sign, maybe take into account some directional sign from US-19 to get the people down there, maybe a simple monolith, I think that's something along that line, as far as identifying the SpongeDocks there at Dotica East and Alternate 19, Parnell Avenue where you turn, but I think for right now, and we could certainly still hold the money in reserves, but the whole idea is, I was kidding around with the city manager today, this Gateway sign, I actually got a call about that today from a resident, I thought we've got, that we put that behind us, I said we did, and about 10 minutes ago, I had that same conversation with the city manager, so I think from the standpoint of this, the, the evolution that we went through and got to where we had this grandiose project that we're talking about, it might be best just to clear the books on it, keep the money in reserves, if we want, city manager can do that without any problem, and then come back with something like a, some simple sign or a monolith, and then take into account some directional sign from US-19.
We have money set aside in the planning budget for the Greek Town Historic Desert for a, whatever they call it, for a planning, a place planning thing?
Yes.
Maybe we could incorporate signage into that sort of whole sphere.
Into the vision plan, perhaps, yeah.
You know, because, I mean, we have money set aside, we could put more money into it, that would probably please them rather than.
That, that would be probably the best way to go about it, you know.
We can't vote on it without having an agenda item though, no?
Well, it's on for direction, so this is, if, if you read my agenda item.
Just remove, just remove the.
Report and, and direction.
What number is that, Mr. Robertson, do you, do you have, do you have a number on it?
Number eighteen.
Uh, project eighteen?
Yes.
On the list?
Project eighteen.
Eighteen, so why don't we go ahead and.
Motion.
Accept, accept the, accept the report, and then with a motion, including the motion to remove project eighteen from the project list.
So, motion to accept the report as written, except to remove project eighteen from the list.
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Commissioner Kuliash?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lunt?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticius?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Robertson.
Thank you.
Let's see, the next thing, are you up on the next one now? Yeah, you're on the direction of.
Probably, but I'm not first.
Okay.
Eleven?
Oh, we're in ARPA, I forgot we did the other two.
We did thirteen and fourteen, and now we're on fifteen, which is the ARPA funding.
Ron can start, well, I'll start talking, or Ron can start going, again, we're, we're coming back to you to, to give you some, some updates, some updates on our numbers, as we told you before, this is a working document, we're all, we, we gave you costs, we gave you estimates, and, and we've also in the meantime, looking for different funding, what I want to address tonight is some time-sensitive ones, and I mentioned a couple of them on the introduction to this, we have the item from the Chamber of Commerce, and that's time-sensitive, the $50,000 request due to losses during COVID, the second one I want to address, because it's time-sensitive, we've done some new figuring, new configuration of costs to lower the ARPA funding request, and, and I've brought the team forward who's worked on that, mostly Tommy Keiger, Suzanne Linton, and, so we want to talk about the new number that we're, we're asking for, obviously with what happened in Dunedin, and again, theirs didn't hit their plans, but there's, you know, reason we won't go into for security reasons, but it's still a scary thing, so we want to bring that forward to see what your decision are on, on a lower amount of funding from the ARPA funds, we also want to talk about Bob, we'll talk about a little bit of his adjustments on the spring by U.C. wall, and some ideas we're, we're looking at, an additional one from one of the addendums we have, is we do have, that's coming up in a later agenda item, funding for the land purchase, not only for stormwater, but for preservation of the land on Florida Avenue, and we've got a revised funding request, where we've got some money from other sources, and have reduced the ARPA funding request to 400,000, knowing on that one that we're not gonna have to expend the money until after the referendum in March, so there still could be some adjustments, and I don't know if there'll be any funds available, but right now, Ron and your backup has some tentative funding, and he asked to commit 400,000 of the 720 some odd thousand to that project, so those are some of the things we want to look, can you think of, Ron, any of the other updates you've made in, in ARPA, and then we'll go forward with, with addressing, if you want to do it one at a time, Mayor, the chamber, the cybersecurity, and have Bob give you an update on the, on the C-wall, and of course, we'll address the land purchase in a, in a, in, in an item coming up after this.
Is that how you want to split it up?
If you.
No, that's fine, that's.
If that's the board wishes, dude, is there anything else that we've changed on, to, to go on the changes from the last time they've seen the ARPA funding things, you want to know anything else, Ron?
Yeah, basically, this is the same form that we had, you know, back when we're working on the budget, the major changes since then have been, we added cybersecurity on the front sheet here, we have 700,000 proposed to come out of ARPA, and then the other 700,000 will come out of the Water and Sewer Fund, like, Bob's got some changes to the Craig Park C-Wall Section 1, where we used to be funding more out of ARPA, now it's 1.8 million out of, out of that ARPA, and, Ross property, well, that Ross property's on the back sheet here, the second sheet, that's where the ones that are still, you know, if you want to decide on which ones do you bring under, under ARPA, and as you can tell, the, on the first sheet, the ones, the 5.3 million is what has been approved so far, and the ones down below, you know, as I say, is a proposed ARPA projects out there to still be determined on.
I was seeing those, is there any others than the ones I mentioned, because I mentioned those that you've said, is there any other ones that?
No, sorry.
Okay.
Just thought I'd repeat them again.
So I guess we maybe look at the, addressing the, the chamber, then we've, we've got a presentation on the, on the ARPA funding for cybersecurity, Bob do spring Boulevard C-Wall, and, you know, maybe if we need to, he'll also talk about the, the Ross property and what our breakdown is for that.
Well, let me go ahead and get started, let, let's take the, let's take the two right now together, cybersecurity and the chamber request, do, I'm gonna ask whether there's any public comments, Ms. Hungaville, you're here, you don't need to make a comment, but you're here, if you have any specific questions, are there any public comments? Mr. Jump, are there any remote access comments?
Anyone online would like to speak on this item, please raise your hand, and you'll be allowed into talk. And we do have a raised hand, I'll allow the first person in.
Okay.
Good evening, Peter Delakis, 514 Ashland Avenue, when I'm looking at all the different projects, it is important to look at the cybersecurity, but the one I really had a question about, and maybe y'all can discuss it later, I know about the Ross property for the stormwater and the other needs down there off of Florida Avenue, and we know about the long-wanted CoCorus Park, but I'm curious about the third one on that page two, where it says land purchase Stamis property, 3.25 million, now, which property is that, is that where we're putting the spoil, because I thought they said they didn't want to sell it, so which property are we talking about that's the Stamis property, but other than that, I'll leave the rest of the debating up to y'all as to whether to additionally fund any other aspects, the chamber does seem to have a valid concern, and 50,000 doesn't seem to be too much out of 1.4, 1.648439 remaining funds, so basically, you'll still have 1.6 million left, but I still would like to know more about the Stamis property purchase, and later, I guess we'll hear about it, other property purchases, thank you.
Okay, yeah, we're, we're gonna talk about the properties in that one as well, that's one thing I want to talk about as well, so thank you, Mr. Delakis, any other remote access comments, Mr. Jump?
We have no other raised hands at this time.
Okay, thank you, so what we're gonna do is go to commission comments now, and talk about either the cybersecurity, the chamber, Ms. Linton is here, and the Chamber of Commerce is here, but Ms. Hungaville had provided us for a memorandum, and, and that's pretty straightforward, it's just to recover the COVID, from the COVID, and, and without having to borrow any money, let me go to Vice Mayor Lunt.
Okay, so let me cover the cybersecurity first.
Go ahead.
So I actually have read pretty much all the material in our cybersecurity department as far as audits and so forth, I've got to admit, I'm more pleased at the, at the 1.4 million dollars rather than the 2 million dollars that we were discussing originally, my initial thought after going through this was, hey, why isn't Water and Sewer paying for, you know, their security, et cetera, as much as, you know, coming from the general fund, et cetera, so, after it resolved to this, I want to say that, that I think it's a coherent plan, I've seen the plan, I obviously can't divulge too much information publicly, but it's solid and it's responsive, and I think, for my part anyway, I think it's something that we should move forward to, forward with sooner rather than later, glad to see that, that part of this balance has been moved to, to Water and Sewer, as I initially thought it should be, so, excuse me, as far as the Chamber of Commerce, I think this is a, a perfect use of ARPA funds, this is what ARPA was meant for, to make things whole, for your city, when, when disruption's been caused by COVID, and obviously cancelling, you know, major events that are, that are contributory to the Chamber of Commerce, happened because of COVID, they had to cancel events, they couldn't have events, I think the chamber does a, a load of good stuff for our city, they're out there, they're promoting us all the time, they're, they're helping the businesses, et cetera, they do a good job for us, they throw great events, and so I'm all for it, and that's all I have to say on those two things.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Keiger's here as well, right? There you go, Commissioner Carr?
Are we just talking about the two items right now?
Just those two items.
Are we gonna talk about anything else tonight?
Yes.
Okay, cybersecurity, yes, chamber, no.
You okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay, Commissioner Eisner?
That's all? That was it? Wow. Well, I did speak also with Susan and Tom is, yes, and, you know, I'm, I'm for this to spend the money, I was glad to hear what Vice Mayor had to say, this is more his expertise than it is mine, I take my hat off to the butcher baker and candlestick maker, so, on that, on that aspect, I'm in agreement, as far as to the chamber, I think they're doing a great job, everywhere I go, people are telling me that, you know, there's more and more businesses open, and it all has to do with your hard work, so I am, I, I know that they did have to close up, I was here for one of the art festivals that, when COVID first struck, so I, I'm for the 50,000 as well, so, that's it.
Commissioner Kuliash?
I'm in support of the, of the chamber, I understand that some of their major events were completely impacted by COVID, and, you know, they, they do a great job in supporting new business, so, older businesses in the neighborhoods, and, and just doing everything to keep commerce going in Tarpon, so I'm all for it, I was happy to see that we did allocate some money from ARPA funds to cybersecurity in the water and sewer infrastructure, and I'm gonna follow Vice Mayor's lead and his expertise with it, and from the Citizens Academy, we saw, I was able to attend one of the classes where overwhelming support was from the, from the Citizens taking the academy about having our water and our sewer and everything just secure, so they understand the importance of it, and I even made a joke by saying, hey, you guys don't mind us spending these, this money on, on this infrastructure and cybersecurity, and they, they didn't hesitate, said, no, we don't mind at all, so, I definitely support it, and was happy to see that we were able to put some funds to the side, so thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, I think both are wise expenses, and I don't have anything more, what do you talk to Ms. Hungaville about this, and also, cybersecurity's been a work in progress, and we've kind of lived through things, and continuing to live through things, and that demonstrates necessity for it, so, let's go ahead and have a, a motion to approve the expenditure of $700,000 for cybersecurity, this is out of the ARPA fund, and $50,000 grant to the, to the Chamber of Commerce, Tarpon Springs Chamber of Commerce.
So moved, yes.
Okay, second?
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Commissioner Kuliash?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lunt?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticius?
Yes, okay, thank you, thank you. Okay, let's go to the properties now, there's, there's actually the, the South Florida property that is on the table, and we're gonna have an agenda item to approve the contract on that, the CoCorus Park property, and then also the Stamis property, and, and the, the, let's just have a discussion and see where that goes, the Stamis property is, is something that I'm adding on here, because the, the price tag from about, I think 3.2 is what we had funded, right?
Yes.
You know, and I think it's up to 5.5, and it, and then it, it's not like it's an asking, there's been some activity on the property at about that level, so, we probably need to kind of abandon that and start looking for some other property, it's a pretty healthy price for property for a disposal site, so, let me go to public comments, again, concerning the South Florida property, CoCorus Park or Stamis property, any public comments? None, okay, Mr. Jump, are there any remote access comments?
Anyone online would like to speak on this item, please raise your hand, and you'll be allowed into talk. And we do not have any raised hands at this time.
Okay, thank you, let's go to the, let me just start with the city manager, is there anything specific you want to talk about on these three?
Well, again, on, on the three properties, I agree with the mayor, I've been involved with the negotiation for it, the 5.4 is way out of our, I mean, it's just, it's just way out, and, you know, that just probably needs to be taken off, but with taking it off, we need to be looking for another, because it is a spoil from, from former Commissioner Delakis, it is the present spoil site, and we do need to be looking, so, it may be, I mean, we need to take this off, because it's out of reach, but I also need to begin with my team to search for a possible another piece of property that may come back later, but for the time being, I think this can come off, CoCorus Park, which I've probably been negotiating to try to get for five or six years, it's still in their hands, we did the appraisal, we sent the appraisal to them, we're waiting, the appraisal was 160,000, we offered 200,000, and we've been waiting a month, and we've been asking, there is, there is an attorney involved, that they've got involved, and the last we talked to her, she's awaiting the decision of her client, so, that's on hold, but that, that is one I'll bring back to you, right now, you know, and, and I imagine it's gonna be counted a little higher, and, and, but we kind of know the range, the, the 160 to 300,000 dollar range, but again, I can't bring that back to you until I even have the, the idea they offer, but that, that I think we need on the list for possible future funding, or you want to put it aside for night, and the third one, the Ross property, as you see the breakdown from Ron, trying to look at different sources, as of right now, you know, we would be asking, we don't have to have it now, but we'd be asking to commit a little 400,000 of the ARPA funding, let me get to his memo that was attached, proposed right now, and again, this is not. He's proposing right now, and again, this is not money we have to expend until it, because obviously this has to go to referendum, the purchase, but right now he's recommending 180,000 of the land preservation fund, 148,000 of stormwater fund and, and 400,000 of ARPA fund for the total of, of 728 that the, that the contract they're giving and I know the questions come up and it is in the contract to purchase that the land can only be used for preservation in storm or that will be, that will be in the thing, it can't be used for anything later and that's, that's how the, that's how the sales agreement, that's how it be written, so anybody, I know there's concern about, we're buying it for that now. Also, we're using some of the land preservation funds, that money, it cannot change and the city or future board do anything else with it because of use that money, so it will be set and it's very important for the landowner that it be kept. The other people have been looking at the property, want to try to squeeze some homes in there and that kind of thing, it's very essential, we've talked about it before, the value of stormwater, so right now the proposal is to put aside, obviously we don't have to spend because, but proposal is to put 400,000 aside from ARPA money to go towards that purchase if it passes referendum in March.
Okay. Vice Mayor Lunt?
Okay, so, well, I'll go in reverse order here. As far as the Ross property, I think it's probably something that we need to do, I think it's to the advantage of the Rosses, quite frankly, but it's, it's also involved in, in where we need to have water flow through. My question would be, because it's preservation only, whether we have intentions of turning it into a park? Or whether we're just going to leave it natural the way it is? Because right now there's just a swale through that, that property that's aiding in the drainage and if the city owns it, the city's gonna have to do a better job of maintaining it from my perspective, anyway. So is that a possibility?
That could be, again, the first concern is the stormwater and, and the possibility of what's needed there and looked at is probably future, just what the commitment is is that it not be built on.
Yes, okay.
So, so what we use on to preserve it, a park is to preserve, other things are doing, but right now it's a concern and we gotta remember the, the only reason we're able to do anything with stormwater on there is because of the good grace of the Rosses signing the agreement, we go on the property at any time, I don't want to say the different circuits that happen at death's end, but, but again, the only reason we've got out the last 15 years to try to help with some of the flooding of that neighborhood out there is because he signed the permission to us to enter, so that's the big importance, because that could end, that could end, or if he sells it, that could end and we have no access and then we have serious issues with what we do with the stormwater, so.
Okay. So I'm, I'm actually for that purchase. If we have to use ARPA funding to do that, you know, 400,000, so be it, let's, let's do that. Excuse me. Coors Park, that's a, that's a no-brainer to me. I don't, I think 300,000 is a little high for something that came in with a, with a appraisal of 160, but I'm sure your negotiating skills will get that down into some sort of reasonable area. The Stamis property, from my perspective, is way too expensive. We have a lease on it now, I don't, I can't remember exactly when that lease ends, it's gonna be used for spoil, what do we do after, we don't need it for spoil. I mean, we don't dredge the Anclot Basin that often that we need a permanent spoil site, or do we?
We do need to have one in the future, that's why I said, as we abandon, we still have to look for some place.
We need a permanent one? Because didn't we lease this for spoil before? Can we not lease this continually?
I think the problem is, is the land gonna be available the next time we do the spoil?
Yeah, let me explain, the, one condition that the Army Corps has is that we're the local sponsor for the dredging.
I understand that.
It's our responsibility to provide a disposal site, that's, that's our responsibility and if we don't have a disposal site, the river can't be dredged. So we were fortunate that this property was owned by someone else that we had leased and the Stamis family leased it to us for this purpose, obviously the, because the market, the price has gone up, so we've got to find another parcel. The one positive attribute, desirable attribute of this property is it's outside the flood plain, it's high and so we don't need a disposal pond property that is outside the flood plain, we could actually have something that's in the flood plain and would be cheaper land as well, so there is some property, it's just the idea of identifying it and getting the, the acceptance from DEP and the Army Corps as far as the effluent, the runoff, once you pump the, the material with the.
Uh huh, I understand.
The runoff has to get, make its way back to the river and that route has to be approved by the, by both DEP and the, and the Army Corps, so.
So, but what you're saying is the current lease on the Stamis property is not gonna be long enough?
No, no. The lease, the lease is only there for the dredging, we've started the lease, what, 2016, so we've leased it only for the dredging, but the lease expires, as soon as the dredging is done, there's a certain amount of time that we have to remove the material off the property, restore it and the lease ends.
Oh, okay, I, I.
Yeah, it's tied.
Didn't know the circumstances of the lease, but, okay, so anyway, it's, I think we should definitely look for, for someplace else. I've looked at this, there's, there's other upland property around there too that I don't know if we've fully investigated.
There is, we just have to.
And we might want to take a look at some of the Myers Cove property, the north end over the river, that, I mean, it's, you can't do anything with it, if we dump fill on it, what's, that may not be a problem, anyway, so that's, that's it.
Yeah, we just have to search, I guess, yeah.
No more comments.
Okay. Commissioner Carr?
Yes, to both properties, Coors and Ross. I would ask that we look at pocket park play for the Ross property as well, too, if there's an option there. There's not really a whole lot of parks in that area of the city, I think Trentwood and then Sunset Beach are the closest.
Yeah. It's three and a half acres, it's a nice piece of property. Is that it?
That's it.
Okay, Commissioner Eisner?
Yes, to Ross and Coors and no to Stamis.
Okay. Commissioner Cuyas?
Yes, to the Ross property, if, Coors Park, I hope we can get it somewhere near that, you know, 250 and under, but we'll see and Stamis property, I, I just don't have an opinion on it yet, so.
Yeah. I'm, I'm fine, what we'll do is the, we'll just formally let the Stamises know that our interest is not there any longer. The South Florida property is fine, obviously, and as far as the parks go, you can come back, we have to be careful, I think, of the, maybe, maybe not, Ms. Jacobs may have to advise us on this along with whatever our attorney is as far as the wording of the ballot language for the use of the property, it's gotta be somewhat specific, I believe. The other thing on the Coors Park property, how long have you been working with them? Several years, right?
Many years, six at least.
What I'd like to do is set a date to where a decision has to be made one way or the other and I've mentioned, I'm not shy about taking a piece of property, this has been sitting there, it has no development density to it, it's a park, we have a need for a mini park in our comp plan, there's absolutely no, there's no doubt as far as the need being there and so I don't want to put the city manager in a position where we just keep going on for another year or so and I think we just need to buy this property, put it to work for the city as a park and get on with whatever else we need to do rather than spending time trying to figure out when they're gonna come back with a, a price for us, so I, I was thinking December 31st, I'm, I'm open to anything, actually, and that turns me, if you've got a better date than that, that's fine, you know, by the end of the year, we need to have an answer as far as the, a price and then we can decide whether we're gonna move ahead with that price or not. Is that okay? All right. So the way to handle is if we can have a motion to authorize expenditure of 400,000 dependent on the referendum passing for the South Florida Avenue property, the deadline of December 31st for an answer from the owners as far as the, the, the Coors Park property and then simply to notify the Stamis family that we, the city no longer has an interest in that property. If y'all could kind of put that in a motion in a second.
I would say so moved in what the mayor said.
Pardon me?
So moved what the mayor said.
Okay. Zach, Ms. Jacobs, okay, second? Okay, roll call, please.
I'm sorry, who was, who seconded that? Vice Mayor?
I seconded.
Commissioner Cuyas?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lunt?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticius.
Yes. Now, there's some loose ends, I, I want to ask Commissioner Carr, did you have anything specific you want to talk about?
Do you want Bob to give the thing on the?
Seawall, that's what I was gonna say, if it was related, we could tie it together, is there something?
No, I mean, my, I, I brought it up multiple times, it pertains to just water lines and that was one of the things that the ARPA funds are intended for, we have like, I think, 20, or the city has like 20 miles of iron water lines and I meant to bring a piece of iron to show you all what an iron cop, iron pipe looks like, there's just a significant amount out there and I know we have some funds left, it's really important, I think, to push some of that forward, but I'll, I'll send Mark an email, picture of it and then I'll have him dismat, send it out to the board, so you guys can see it.
So we can stay with the Craig Park seawall and?
Yeah, that's fine.
All right, let's go ahead and do that. Did you have anything to say to get started on that, the Craig Park?
I just want Bob to give an update of what.
All right, what, as I understand, Commissioner Carr is gonna send you some information, we can pick it up at a later date. Okay. Mr. Robertson?
Yes, sir, so the quick summary, for Craig Park and the adjacent seawalls, we've looked at breaking it into two phases, the first phase would be everything that's in Craig Park including the platform and the second phase would be for later work where we're talking about the northern part, where the private docks are and, and the sidewalk there. So to unpack that request that we're putting in ARPA, the first phase for the Craig Park area is really two pieces, the first piece is the failing sidewalk that we want to replace with a brand new seawall, brand new sidewalk and raise it up to five feet, that's the first part. The second part is the existing seawall that runs around the north and west side of the park, instead of replacing that seawall and with a brand new seawall and raising it, which was part of the 5.1 million dollars that we'd asked for the federal government to give us, instead of doing that, we're gonna look at doing some, we'll call it landscape sculpting, maybe some berms through that section to set the elevation at five, but also just come in and do some repla, repairs where needed on the existing seawall, most of that seawall's in pretty good shape and a lot of it was replaced, I think, maybe 10 years ago, something like that, so it still meets the intent of the federal request, so I, I believe, so that we should be able to still get that 2 million and that reduces the ARPA ask from 3.1 million to 1.8 million. That's the summary on that. Does that capture what we talked about, Mayor?
No, that's the, just the part from the boat ramp all the way around to the city dock, right?
Yes, that's right.
Okay, and then the part from the city dock to Canal Reed, you said that would be for a future?
That's how I see that, as being a future phase that we'd have to look for additional funding somehow and could be addressed later.
But we, we, we try to look at that maybe in the whole realm of our design, we may look at that so we know what ideas of the cost and stuff.
Yeah, thank you, Mark, we could do the design as one big package, maybe even split into two design pieces, but take advantage of the fact that we're spending money and time doing all this research and design now, capture all that in design and then work on the construction phase later, so thank you for the clarification.
Yeah, and then we'd have a better idea of the cost and, again, as, as we're moving along every month, looking for costs, getting our no grant rider in, we can be looking at that and we'll have more of an idea, the ideal thing is obviously to do it all together and we've got some time to work on that, work on grant, looking at something else, but I think capturing that design and they're still gonna, dropping the ARPA money we're asking for, dropping that and still accomplishing what we want and possibly we look for some other sources to maybe be able to, when the design's done, maybe to do the whole thing and do it right, do the whole thing.
Okay. So, yeah, let me just say, my preference would be to do the whole thing, but I want to work with the commissioner on this, we don't have, you know, deep pockets, so let's go to, if, let's go to public comments, are there any public comments on this item?
Anita Protus, 901 Bay Shore Drive, are we gonna be able to see these designs on Craig Park before you implement them?
Oh, yes.
Because when you say berms, I want to see what those look like, because the rocks look so industrial, it's just ruining the whole area there. Those rocks went down, so I hope that we can see what it looks like, because that is our historic star there and I know something has to be done, but I don't want it to look like we have a war working over the berms, over the water, please, have a public hearing and let us see what it looks like.
Thank you. Were there any other comments? Mr. Jump, are there any remote access comments?
If anyone online would like to speak on this item, please raise your hand and you'll be allowed into talk. And we do not have any raised hands at this time.
Okay, thank you. Vice Mayor Lunt?
I'm actually a fan of doing the total design for both A and B and then proceeding with the A part as far as construction, mostly because it doesn't make much sense to do two different designs, we need to make sure they're cohesive, the design charges will be somewhat ameliorated doing it that way. Also, are we gonna have issues with, because the north end of that or the, the B part of that, there's a lot of privately owned docks and so forth and so on, are we gonna have to individually negotiate with each homeowner and it's all nine of them?
Yeah, that's why it's a, partly why it's a future phase. It'll take some time.
One of the thoughts I had when we got into this in the beginning is because if you notice right now in Craig Park, everybody's replacing their dock, but they're not lifting it up very high.
Six inches.
Yeah, I mean, they're like up maybe a foot, so I've been holding myself back from running around knocking on doors going like, you don't want to do this right now, but that be as it's made, so we, we may want to start those negotiations or at least introductions as we start the design phase of this, because it's gonna, that's, I think nine properties is, is correct, there's, there's a lot of good individuals you're gonna have to deal with on that, but otherwise, then I'd say, yeah, let's move ahead with the design and construction of the A part.
Okay.
Yeah. Let me just say, you know, I've kind of gone through this visualizing it, when you wrap around, and this is just for information, for discussion, when you go around to the private side, that's the north side, and you go around Canal Reed, that sidewalk, the sidewalk around the bayou is gonna be a couple of feet higher.
Yeah.
But the land is actually gonna go back down to the road, so there's gonna be some issues there that we have to work out with the county, because that's a county road, so there's a whole lot of, of, I keep using the word integration, there's gotta be a whole lot of communication with the county, what we're doing, you know, with the, the sidewalks, the whole idea is to prevent inundation from getting back behind that and flooding out those areas and then flooding it all the way back from there to down to the intersection of Spring and MLK, that's a hole, if you leave a hole, it's gonna get flooded.
Yeah, I understand.
So my point I'm trying to make is that until we actually get into the design, set the elevations and things and do some topography to get an idea of what we're looking at and also understand what the elevations are of the sidewalks, I'm sorry, the seawalls around the, near the boat ramp, we're really not gonna be able to discuss this, you know, I don't want to say intelligently, but that's an accurate word, we could do a lot of arm waving and stuff, but we need to have some information, so I think that the approach would be to do the, the entire design, that way we know what we're dealing with and then we can make a decision as far as the, and then the property owners can take a look at that, too, see whether they want to step down or whatever. to step down or whatever. But, um, and it kind of gets into some of the other things as far as the berms and see how radical they're going to be. But at this point, I think all we're looking for is, um, to proceed with the, um, the one initial area from the boat ramp around to the city dock, the design for the whole thing, and then we can go from there for the rest of it. Is that basically?
Yeah, that's basically it. Sounds good to me.
Commissioner Carr?
Thanks. You mentioned the word five feet, or multiple words, five feet. What does that mean?
It's elevation above means?
Okay, that was my assumption.
Sea level, yeah.
Where is it at today?
Uh, where is it at today? Where the seawall set at? About three.
Okay.
Actually, I think we're talking about five point eight. That's, that was, unless he's changed it now, the guy from Arcadis.
There's some discussion about that with, uh, I don't want to get into a whole thing about, but Tampa Bay Regional Planning Council's looking at setting a five-foot minimum for the region, and, uh, as a, as a model ordinance. Or was it just that we sat through a webinar on that today? Um, so that's part of one of the things I'm going to be talking about in this Arcadis memo that I come back to you all about, is whether we set that elevation at five or five point eight. You know, Arcadis is saying we need to do one thing, um, five is?
Okay, y'all deal with it.
We'll work on that.
But that, that's?
Hey, I've got a question, um, and something we could follow up on. So Craig Park kind of floods a little bit currently today, and between the old library and, um, the bayou.
Yeah.
Um, if we raise it another two, two and a half feet, which is a lot of water that could be ponding in there, um, something that we should probably be looking at, um, as part of the design, I would think, too. So, um?
Correct.
When it says A and B, and then C and D, can you just, real quick, tell me what that is real quick?
Sure, yeah. Sorry for the confusion on that, but I, um, I tried to break it into sections so that I could analyze it, but, uh, A would be the seawall section from the boat ramp around to the sidewalk where that starts.
Got it.
B would be the sidewalk section to the city dock, the platform.
Okay.
And then C and D are the two, two segments to the north.
Okay.
Where the private docks are.
I'm for design of A, B, C, and D. I'm for funding A and B construction.
Got it.
The end.
Committing the funds for that right now.
For A and B, yeah.
That'll satisfy the money that we got from the federal government.
Yes.
Right.
And find some water pipes to replace.
Okay.
I'm done.
Alright. Commissioner Eisner?
Thank you, Mayor. Does the water really come up, um, right by the boat dock over the, over the seawall?
I haven't seen it do that, but I haven't been out there all the time.
No, that's higher, that's the whole point, until we figure out with the elevation. I haven't seen it either, that's why I'm asking. Is that where you're trying to do a berm, though?
Well, we're trying to mitigate what might come over the seawall at those, you know, surge elevations, so, yeah, that's kind of what the thought. And keep in mind, this is all very conceptual right now, so?
Okay.
I'm not going to be able to talk numbers and locations yet with you.
Well, because right there is a cement wall, uh, and I've never seen the water come over the top, and I'm there often, so.
Let, let me just add, I mean, I, I know it's your, your turn to talk, but the seawall from the boat ramp around behind the old tourist club is higher than where the sidewalks are.
Yes, I know.
That's the point. And so when we talk about three feet for the sidewalk, and then five feet, two feet up, you may need six inches of foot at, down there by the boat ramp, or something. So that's what Mr. Robertson's talking about, more of a sculptor, sculpted in landscape rather than a berm that we were talking about down towards Whitcomb Bayou a little more. Remember the wall?
I, I understand the difference.
So go ahead.
Um, also, what I'd like to see there, and I think I spoke into the city manager about it, whatever we do there, we do need to put some sort of a bumper for people to leave their boats there, so whenever we go into that design, I'd like to do that as well, possibly put in cleats so that they don't have to stand there, hold their boats. But, um, when it's coming around the sidewalk, you're now trying to represent it as just doing repair work, not everything, is that in the B, your B area?
The, the, yeah, the B, now I'm getting my As and Bs mixed up.
He's right, the B area is where the repair work is.
The sidewalk that is failing, that is flooding, is going to get taken out, and the seawall's going to get taken out, and it's all going to get rebuilt. The sea, the existing seawall that comes from the boat ramp around is what we're talking about leaving intact, making repairs, and doing some landscaping bluffs and things like that to, to set the elevation without it being ugly or obtrusive.
Okay. So then, trying to do this all through C, are any of the people that live in those, those nine homes or nine docks, are they aware at all that we're looking to do this?
They may be, they may not be, that's going to be part of the project.
As I say, I wanted to not go.
We haven't started that yet.
Because, as Vice Mayor said, I mean, every single person has remodeled their dock, pretty much. I mean, not elaborate, uh, some are more elaborate than others, uh, but they're all done. It was like, there must have been a fire sale, because everybody got it done. Um, and it's just bad timing to not let them know that, you know, that something is going to get done, because it just makes, for a problem. Down at the end, um, where Spring Street is, is probably the worst, because that's where it's at its lowest. So, um, the only thing I'm going to recommend is possibly if we're going to build that up, um, if we can't get the county to raise the road there as well, we would have to, I think, just put a couple of steps to get up onto the new sidewalk, because that's all you could really do. Um, you can't really tailor it down.
You need a handicap.
Say again?
Handicap, it'll work out.
Idiot.
Uh, then it would be a ramp, yeah, yeah. Okay. But, uh, listen, I'm, I'm for this, I, I drive by, it breaks my heart all, all the time to see the water over the top.
Right.
You know, so, that's it.
Thank you. Commissioner Kuyas?
Hey, Bob, I'm, I'm interested in seeing, uh, the design for A, B, C, and D, uh, the construction for Phase One, A and B, and if we can get this project started during this three-year span, we, we're on a good track. I mean, it's, you know, that'd be probably one of our biggest accomplishments, so whatever we got to do to see it get done. Thank you.
Alright. Let's have a, um, a motion, uh, as Commissioner Kuyas just repeated, and, um, and then a second, and then we can vote on it.
Motion to approve the one point eight, one nine four one zero for section A and B, design and build, and also design C and D out of the ARPA funds. Is that reflected?
Is that?
Second.
Is that the way, Mr. Robertson, is that the way you want it?
I heard it, that sounds like right.
Alright. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Kuyas?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lunt?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticius?
Yes. Okay. Alrighty. Um, I'm going to, uh, the, the rest of the ARPA stuff, we'll pick it up at another time?
Yes, yes. The rest we'll pick up at another time.
Alright. Um, the next item is the charter amendments. Ms. Vincent?
Again, while she's walking up, we want to bring these to you to look at one last time and give our opinion before we come. Obviously, we've got some time restraints because of the referendum question, we got plenty of time, so we wanted to bring this by you one more time, get any suggestions or changes, and then we'll move forward with bringing the ordinance for you, so, Renee, will you?
So essentially, you have two ordinances proposing amendments, uh, to the city charter. The first, um, and your backup is, would be amending the zoning powers, um, and that would be to allow or to direct that, uh, site plans and conditional uses on projects or parcels less than one acre could be, or should be, shall be, uh, reviewed, um, by the Planning and Zoning Board, reviewed and approved, excuse me, by the Planning and Zoning Board. It does provide for the ability for the Planning and Zoning Board to send something directly to the board at their discretion, um, and it also provides for an appeal process for any aggrieved party, um, from the Planning and Zoning Board decision to the Board of Commissioners. So that's one. The second ordinance addresses amendments to, um, the powers and duties of the Board of Commissioners, and it adds, um, a requirement that the board conduct, or the city conduct a public hearing at the beginning of each budget cycle, no later than June thirtieth to obtain public input on budget priorities. And then the second addition is, um, reads as to implement a strategic plan for the city. The strategic plan shall be utilized for budget and capital project planning decisions, and shall be updated every fiscal, three fiscal years, beginning October first, 2025. So that's the language submitted for your discussion and review or edits, and we will, we'll go from there.
Let's go to public comments. Are there any public comments on this item? Mr. Jump, are there any remote access comments?
If anyone online would like to speak on this item, please raise your hand, and you'll be allowed into talk. And we do not have any raised hands at this time.
Thank you. Um, let's go to commission comments. Vice Mayor Lunt?
Okay, so ultimately, this is going to be something that the citizens have a vote on.
Yes.
Um, I hope you all had a chance to look at it. I had GIS pull up a visual of what this means. Um, Renee, you probably can't put it up on the screen, but?
I can't, sorry.
Let's say it's a significant portion of Tarpon Springs is going to fall under the less than one acre thing, so that's, that's something that I don't really want to comment on, but I thought you needed to see it from a, a visual representation, because when I saw this less than one acre, I thought, okay, so what does that mean? I mean, I don't think of things when I drive by, and, well, that's less than one acre, this is less than one acre. So when I had GIS pull up this map, and, you know, said, you know, exclude basically residential areas, it's looking to me like this is ninety-five percent of our town. I mean, I'm not sure if that's accurate, Renee could probably give you more accurate representation. Um, but it's, it's just something I wanted you to consider. I mean, ultimately, the, the citizens are going to have the say on this, but we're the ones that get to say if it, you know, goes on to the referendum. And that's, that's basically my point. I didn't want to come out in favor, yea or nay, but I wanted to make sure that people knew what we were looking at, and that, you know, a, a large portion of the development decisions and redevelopment decisions in this town, if this charter change goes through, is really not going to be in our purview anymore, and I'm not sure of how you all feel about that. So, anyway, that's the end of my comments. For this particular time, I'll reserve maybe some comments for later on.
Okay. Is that it?
Yeah, I'm done.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Yeah, um, thank you. I'm not in support of, um, the Planning and Zoning Board. Uh, I think they're great people. Um, I think it's important to keep that power here within the Board of Commissioners who have been elected. Uh, this is, this map is a, a very good indicator, um, shows you a significant amount of the core of our city, um, within downtown, off downtown Sponge Docks areas, um, that could be sensitive. Uh, we have a great planning board right now, that could change in coming years. It ebbs and flows based on who's willing to serve in the community, so that's something I think the board needs to take in consideration. Um, the other part is if the board feels so moved, which I do not, um, there needs to be a, a stronger appeal process that really anybody can appeal it. Um, it should be really any resident within the city of Tarpon Springs can appeal it to the Board of Commission, who they duly elected to represent them to basically review these types of plans. So, um, two things, I'll just summarize it again, I don't think the Planning and Zoning Board should have, although I, I really appreciate their, their recommendations and their hard work they put in behind it, I, I think they're all respected individuals. Um, I don't think they should have their own, um, independent power to approve or deny. And then, uh, if the board does feel that, that they should, uh, that there needs to be a better appeal process in place, that anybody can appeal it to the Board of Commissioners within a, a set period of days for site plans and conditional uses. Thanks.
Okay. Commissioner Eisner?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, when I looked at this, um, zoning powers, um, every aggrieved party would appeal, there's just no incentive to not appeal. The only thing, uh, reason that they wouldn't appeal is if they, you know, got the approval, then it wouldn't hit our board. So, I, I mean, it just, to me, it makes no sense. Um, it's the classic second bite of the apple. If you fail at the planning and zoning, you come here and you get another, uh, bite. So, um, I'm not really in favor of giving that much control. If possibly we were talking about, uh, smaller, uh, projects, um, something where it's more in, um, within their purview, I would consider it, but not something like this. This is a little bit for me over the top, so.
I'm not sure what this is, the one acre or less?
Yes, yeah. I mean, if it's, um, you know, an easy, um, an easier, um, proposal, I would go with it, not, not the way it's sitting right now, no. So.
Okay. Is that it?
Yes.
Commissioner Kuyas?
Um, I see, I see the amount of one-acre properties or less, but how many properties do we have that's one acre or bigger that can be developed? And would the board only have the ability to, uh, make a ruling on one of those applications if we're only limited to some bigger projects?
Uh, that, excuse me, we'd have to do some more mapping on that. I mean, the, the thing that's with Tarpon, uh, is that, you know, most of the city is platted into, you know, these historical plaits, and so you can have, you know, five thousand square foot lots, you know, twelve, fifteen thousand square foot lots. How many get aggregated, and it might be a project of an acre or more, you know, I think you'll see, where you've got large, you know, what looks like a lot of vacant property, you know, like parts of the Sponge Docks and stuff, there, the reasons that are showing up on this map is because they're platted lands, and they're not, they look, so they, they kind of look large, but they, in reality, they're probably less than an acre. So that's, that's kind of, the map is a little bit misleading in that respect. There's a lot of property there, just because all the land is platted down to, you know, they were like a residential plaits back, you know, and so, and some, some may have been aggregated through the years, and some may have not, so that, it's a little bit misleading, and, and it's, it's hard, I'll be honest, it's hard to come up with a bright line here of what, what is a good, is it a half an acre, is it a quarter acre? I, you know, it, it's, it's tough, it really is.
I, I was going to even consider maybe smaller, like, like Renee said, a quarter acre or half acre, just, just to see what comes out of it, you know? I'm, I'm concerned, because I, I see some properties where, uh, it's not an acre of property, and we can see buildings built out to the very edge of it, and, you know, maximize full potential. And so that could be, uh, a concern for growth in the future, um, being too fast or, or whatever, but, uh, there's got to be a way to balance this out in a way we, like we've talked about before, the Board of Adjustments makes rulings, you know, it doesn't come before us, there's got to be a way to balance this out, to give some more, um, leeway for, for the Planning and Zoning Board to make some decisions and, and take some off our plate, but I'm just concerned about one acre, because one acre is a big piece of property in Tarpon Springs. Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah. I was going to say, I think if you actually looked at one acre, you're not going to see the same purple-yellow combination, uh, you'll see a lot smaller, because, uh, like, uh, Ms. Vincent is saying, those things are going to be broken up into, you know, smaller lots, five, seven thousand, ten thousand square foot lots, so. Um, and then the other question is, you ask how many actually are going to need a site plan approval. Some are going to be, uh, a site plan approval through the Building Department and the, uh, and the Planning Department, and then all same thing on conditional use, unless there's, uh, if they're building something by right, there's no conditional use involved. So there's a whole lot of variables in all of this, as far as boiling down to how much property we're actually talking about. I'm talking about the, you know, the, this, the, uh, the map that was provided in that. Um, and then also, um, you know, we've got the Historic Preservation Board, the Code Enforcement Board, the Board of Adjustments, they're all independent. Board, the Board of Adjustments, they're all independent. They make their decisions, there's an appeal process. I, I don't, that sort of thing doesn't bother me as far as giving independence. And also, there's a distinct difference between the ordinance that we're seeing tonight, and then what has actually approved in the charter. And in the charter, it would, you could have in a charter amendment that the, you know, that the, it would be allowed to be more than an advisory board as determined by the Board of, I'm sorry, Board of, by the Board of Commissioners, City Board of Commissioners. There's, then the City Commission, getting back to your concern, Commissioner Carr, they can make an adjustment in the future if some things aren't working out, or whatever, by changing the ordinance or something like that. So, there's a variety of ways of doing it. What I'm hearing tonight is, we're probably not ready to vote on this thing, and, and I certainly don't wanna vote on it and send the, the Planning and Zoning Commission, you know, the wrong message. And I was gonna ask you, do you have an idea of, how much time do we have?
I don't think we have, I don't think we have much. We have to get it on, you know, we have to get it...
We have to have two readings of the ordinance, and then the ballot language would be due the very latest, the second meeting of December.
Oh, wow.
Okay.
But we would have to have the ordinances approved first, before the ballot language would come back.
So, we have like six weeks or two meetings, three meetings?
Let me just think things through a second. We probably, we probably need to, my point is, what I'm hearing, what I'm hearing discussed that would work for some commissioners, one, we don't know what that is tonight. Number two, is it may be significant enough to where the ordinance is, needs to be not re-advertised, but, in other words, there's too much of a change between this one to take it to this, you know, the second reading would be different than what we're gonna be approving tonight. You follow me? Like we've done, so there would be a third second, a third second reading?
This is just discussion tonight, so you're not approving the actual, it's not like, it's not a first reading tonight.
Out of an approval tonight.
But we're trying to get it so we could put the ordinance on the next, on the, on, start the agenda process, do the two readings in November. It's a problem, do the first reading in November if we don't know what the language is gonna be.
Well, let me, let me put it, let me cut to the chase. I, I don't have an issue with going something smaller than one acre, because one acre's gonna be a rare animal in Tarpon Springs.
Uh huh.
So, I don't know what that number's gonna be, and that's gonna be something for the Planning Director to, you know, with the staff to come up with. I think that's what you're saying, is that correct?
That, and also, it could be a financial amount as well.
Okay. Let's stop right here. We're approaching the 11 o'clock hour. I'd like to have a motion and a second to extend the meeting, please.
Motion to extend the meeting to 11:15?
Is that enough time?
We'll start with 11:15, but it's probably gonna take longer than that. Let's roll call, please.
Commissioner Cuyas?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Oh.
Vice Mayor Lunt?
Yes.
Mayor Badi Kiyotis?
Yes. Okay, so, for this particular item, do you have an idea of what we're talking about, Ms. Vincent?
I do. I think, at least I have some direction that we can come back, come back with and...
Just do, just kind of, from, from what I'm thinking is, maybe look at what the typical size lots are. Look at our zoning, R1, I mean, as a matter of fact, you're probably better off looking at the zoning map rather than looking at the, this yellow and purple thing, and, and maybe averaging out 10,000 square foot, which would be your typical R100, then R70, R60, that sort of thing would be anything less than that. Is that, I, I know from a planning perspective, there's some nuances there that, that is, that isn't as simple as that.
I mean, well, 'cause we're really looking at, yeah, I mean, that's why, we were trying to, like, weed out the residential stuff, 'cause that doesn't come to, to anybody, and so we're trying to look at the commercial properties. Most of that really is, you know, US 19 and the downtown and the docks, and to Commissioner Lunt's point, so, you know, again, I think it's gonna boil down to some sort of a, a size threshold. You know, the thing that's interesting with...
I'll tell you what, probably the best thing is for me to ask the Commission to get with you, or through the city, through the city manager, get with Ms. Vincent, to kinda get an idea of what you're comfortable with, and then that'll provide some guidance for Ms. Vincent to work with. Is that, is that acceptable?
You all have to be considering the appeal process, too, because anybody who you reject is gonna definitely appeal to the Board of Commissioners.
Yeah, but, but, I mean, I understand that, but that's something to think through. On the other hand, the, what's, the, the other part of this is, the, the P&amp;Z Board may be uncomfortable with approving something, and they'll, they'll defer it to the Commission anyway. It works both ways.
Yeah.
So, I don't, I mean...
And you can have, you know, a random resident, or not a random, either, well, a resident or an affected party, or somebody that, if something does get approved, may not like that something got approved. So, you can have a lot of things coming back to you anyway, so...
I just would hate to vote on something where we change it and it's not gonna work.
I...
Also, I mean, side comment, I thought this was up for a discussion point with the Planning and Zoning Board at their last meeting, and they never discussed this.
This was not on their meeting, no, that were, those were, those were the code amendments that were on their, the Land Development Code and Comm Plan. They, they have expressed through multiple workshops that...
Yeah, I understand that. I was just surprised that I saw it on the agenda and it wasn't discussed.
Yeah, no, I mean, it has not, this, this has not been, this proposal itself has not been discussed with the Planning and Zoning Board directly, and really, that's kind of a matter of time at this point, so...
It's, it's the timing with, with the referendum, I mean, that's, that's the whole thing, and...
And our meetings are back to back.
We'd have to check. I mean, I don't know, we may have to bring an ordinance next meeting. I don't know if we can do another discussion night, and then do two reads of an ordinance and bring this...
No, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be another discussion. It would either, an ordinance and then either...
We'd have to bring an ordinance that either goes or doesn't go, probably.
Right, right, exactly.
All right, well, let's try to crop one that everybody's a little more comfortable with.
Okay. Is that, is that sufficient guidance on that one? What about the next one?
So then, on the, the second ordinance, or the changes to your duties and responsibilities, and this was at your direction, to add a requirement for public hearing at the beginning of the budget process, so we specified that, and no later than June 30th to obtain public input on the budget priorities, and then similarity to what we have for the comprehensive plan and some of our other master plans, "To implement a strategic plan for the city, period, and then the strategic plan shall be utilized for budgeting and capital project planning decisions and shall be updated every three fiscal years, beginning October 1st, 2025."
Vice Mayor Lunt, any comments on that?
I have no problem with this ordinance as written.
Thank you. Commissioner Carr?
This might sound elementary, but can you at least define strategic plan in here? So, it's, I would imagine it's assumed, right, but...
In city management world, a strategic plan is pretty much a known entity. I mean, I'm trying not to be flip about it, but it is a...
No, I just wanna make sure that it's understood.
Yeah. I mean, you could say something like a five to seven year strategic plan, something like that, if you wanna put a timeframe around it for...
Just citywide strategic plan or something like that.
Citywide strategic, okay.
Rather than the, you know, the, for example, the Police Department has a strategic plan. I would suggest...
No, that's, I think I'm trying to make sure we understand the Board's strategic board duties.
I think citywide strategic.
Citywide is good clarification, absolutely.
Thanks.
Commissioner Eisner?
I have no issue with either one.
Okay. Commissioner Cuyas?
I have no issue with the, these duties, but I did want to suggest to the Board, we did the Florida League of Cities orientation online. It did mention a portion of where annual reviews could and should be done in a, a public setting, once a year, to discuss it, board with the four individuals underneath and for annual reviews, and I would consider that, asking this board to consider putting in the annual reviews to have a special meeting, or, you know, once a year to go over the four individuals, in a public setting to discuss it all.
We're talking about the, the strategic plan or the budget?
The annual reviews, my apologies.
Oh, the annual reviews.
With the add to the charter?
Yeah, because...
That would be, basically, the Commission can do that, but you're, you're saying that you want the residents to be able to say that that's, they want that as a requirement.
I, would that be the route we would go, or would we, okay. I would like to see something like that. I just think, you know, residents aren't really gonna go and pull public records on annual reviews, and I just think it helps create a little bit more transparency for the residents and what the Commission's doing in evaluating certain individuals moving forward.
I don't, I mean, mine was evaluated annually when I was city manager. I mean, each Commissioner talked about it, so I don't have an issue if, we could pose it to, I mean, all you're gonna do is pose it to the residents. How do you feel about it? Vice Mayor Lunt?
I don't know. I, we're talking about annual reviews being public? It doesn't matter to me one way or the other, but, you know...
My, he, go ahead, Commissioner Carr.
Yeah, I mean, if I understand correctly, you're saying you, you want something in the charter that says, "The Commission must have an annual review for all charter officials in a public hearing." Is that correct?
Yes, yes.
As a board, not one-on-one?
You wish to do it one-on-one, but, you know, the Florida League of Cities really stresses that, the importance of having a, your annual reviews done in a public setting at some point as well, so...
So, there's two, there's a couple of different ways you could go about it. You could do a resolution, proposed resolution, which is a one-time reading, or an ordinance is a two-time reading, or you're saying adopt it into the charter, which is now something that's very difficult to, to get out of the charter. So, I would say, I mean, the easier route would go is saying, putting it in a resolution and seeing what the board feels about it, might be the quickest and easiest.
Okay, just, just a way to get progress going on that topic, so, whatever this board would think.
Go by charter, then do it, okay. All right. Okay, Commissioner Carr, Commissioner Eisner?
I personally don't see the need for it. You know, this, most reviews are done one-on-one with the employer and the employee. They're not really done where you broadcast it out. I think it's a, a private issue between an employee and employer. I think that the public does have access to it, so it's not anything that we're keeping secret, but I just don't see the need to publicize that. If I was a resident sitting here, I, I don't know if I'd wanna hear what, you know, and, and I'm not knocking the decision, it's just something I, I don't really care to do. It's, to me, it's a waste of time, so...
Okay.
That's what I said.
Do you have anything else to add?
It's not something I came up with, it's actually in the Florida League's orientation in which they discuss it, so it's, and I know it's, you know, was an issue if...
What I, what I, what I think, it, my thoughts are, we're gonna have a Charter Revision Commission coming up in 2014.
Okay.
And each Commissioner goes in front of them and tells them what they would like to see considered for a change. The Charter Revision Commission deliberates on that, and then they pose a que, they decide whether they, that question should come forward. They present the Commission a number of questions that they think should be considered by the residents, and the Commission, the sitting Commission can also add its own questions as well, if they feel that there's something that needs. So, maybe that's the way this item should be handled for right now, and then we're not gonna have to worry about a review until next October.
It's fair enough.
So, we've got some time to kinda deal with that as far as a resolution or an ordinance.
Okay.
Okay. All right, so, Ms. Vincent, I think the direction you got is, this one's okay, the second one's okay.
Mm-hmm. Those change at the citywide, and I'll see if I can take another swing at the Planning and Zoning Board.
Anything else, I'm not... Let's move on then. Thank you, Ms. Vincent.
Thank you.
The manatee protection ordinance review and direction, that's something that I, I put on here. We had manatees in the spring bayou right now, or, or current ordinance requires that the boats be kept out after November 15th, and the one manatee is actually injured, two more showed up, and I'm not sure what the current status of the three are right now, but they're certainly coming into the bayou a lot earlier than they used to, so I was thinking maybe it's time to take another look at that, since this ordinance is about 20 years old, and get an idea from the, some of the experts out there of whether we should make some adjustments. Just seeing them coming into the, to the bayou suggests that we should, but I think the city manager, his recollection is, it's not just a simple changing the date, we're actually gonna have to go through some of the regulatory agencies to get their permission. Chief Young's nodding instead, so you've been through this before?
Yes, sir.
All right. So, and tonight is just to authorize the staff to move ahead with this stuff, and that's it?
Right.
And then they can take a look at the entire ordinance and come back with some recommendations. Let me go to public comments. Are there any public comments on this item?
Long wait tonight. Need a protest 901 Bay Shore Drive. I'm in Craig Park every day, walking, sometimes twice a day, because I have to walk a lot. And last year, I came, I've called the police, not only the boats, but the water scooters, or whatever you call the water scooters. I have watched even now, when the dolphins are in there, people on those scooters go after them, and it's wrong. And I've called the police, you know, to have them come down there, but we don't have any water police to be able to catch them. So, that's another thing you have to look at, it's not just the boats. It's the jet skis, or whatever you call those, that they ride. It's after the dolphins in the water, and, and when the manatees are there. And this past weekend, those jet skis were out there, and they see the fish going around the wall, they're trying to eat, and they come and they do swings around, splash them, and they go after them. So, we really need to do something to be able to protect the water mammals that come into the bayou, because that's where they come and eat, they come for protection, and they come to stay safe and stay warm. So, there's, I don't know how, like the mayor said, you can put a date on it, but it's both that we have to take care of, because I've seen them hit the, the porpoises before, as they go swimming across the bayou, and it's sad, it's sad to see that. And last Saturday, two young boys had a BB gun down there, and they were shooting at the squirrels and the birds. And I went up where I parked my car, and some men went down there and told them to get out. But that's what's happening there. As we grow, we're gonna have to have policemen in the park, 'cause the homeless are in there now sleeping, and we're gonna have to have water, aquatic policemen going around the bayous and the waterways. That's what's happening.
Okay. Are there any other public comments? Mr. Jump, do we have any remote access comments?
We do have one raised hand at this time.
Okay. Commissioner Comments? Vice Mayor Lunt?
So...
Is he, oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I misheard, I misheard.
Good evening.
Mayor, you're gonna run out of time.
Peter Delakis, 514 Ashland Avenue, and also president of Friends of the Ancoat River. We're talking about protecting the manatees in spring bayou. How do they get there? They come up the Ancoat River. So, I understand what you're trying to do with regards to the exclusion zone, but it's about time we start doing something more to protect the waterways during this time, when they're sensitive to this. There's also dolphins and other animals that are coming through these waterways at this time of year. Also, we're having migratory birds coming through here, such that they're dependent on...
Mr. Delakis, let me just... Mr. Delakis, let me just interrupt you for a minute, so we can extend the time of our meeting, and, and I'll let you get back your comments. Hang on a second. All right, Commissioner.
Yeah, no problem. Sorry to.
No, no, that's okay. Uh, Commissioner, may I have a, uh, motion and a second to extend our meeting?
Motion to extend the meeting to eleven forty-five.
Thank you.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Kuyas?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
No.
Vice Mayor Lunt?
Yes.
Okay, so as far as what we control, as you mentioned in your memo, uh, you may need to get property permission along that western area, along Reed and Canal Street. I can speak, uh, for the Board of the Villa Plomosa Condominium Association. Uh, we recently learned that we have a section of land there at that location. And, uh, I know at this point, uh, our board is very conservation orientated, so we would have no problem with you extending the timeframe a couple of weeks on either end. I would recommend getting, as you mentioned, with the Clearwater Marine Aquarium, to see if they've noticed any patterns and time changes and things of that nature. So you don't just randomly select a date, but it's more conducive on scientific background to, uh, be able to reasonably put this forward. And also, we do need to put more no-wake signs or idle speed signs in the Anquo River during this time. People do not realize that that's part of it. If you look at your, uh, backup information, it describes, uh, let me see here. It describes, uh, Spring Bayou, Witcombe Bayou, Minetta Bayou, Ennis Bayou, the tributary adjacent to Brenne Bridge, and all public waters, creeks, bayous, canals, and channels adjacent to Morings Cove Drive and connected to Witcombe Bay, and all other such public waters, creeks, bayous, canals, and channels assigned or designated by direction of the city commissioner, city manager, as manatee, idle, speed, or similar terms. That's number C in the, uh, ordinance. So, I think we need to educate the public more with regards to the speed zones, and, uh, that would be my comment. But we do need to look at just beyond Spring Bayou, as far as how we protect, uh, our native wildlife. Thank you for the extra time. God bless you.
Thank you, thank you. Okay. Any other public comments? Mr. Jump?
No other comments.
Okay, thank you. Vice Mayor Lunt?
I don't know how we put into effect a stronger or longer period for manatee protection within Spring Bayou itself. Um, I think we should investigate that for sure. Um, we had a cold snap this year, it was pretty cold for the last couple of weeks. This, this is when they start moving up. Um, to my knowledge, most of the river and most of the bayous, um, east of, of Myers Cove is, uh, is a no-wake zone. I mean, with the exception being Kramer Bayou. Uh, for some strange reason, our no-wake zone stops at the end of the channel entrance to our bayou. Um, I agree with Mr. Delakis in the fact that there's not enough, uh, idle wake speed signs. There's one at the, there's one at the, um, west end of the river entrance. If you're, if you're coming, uh, if you're coming south up the river, there's one at the, the, uh, the, the channel marker just before the entrance to the river itself, and that's it. And we get people from the boat rental places and so forth and so on, they have no idea. They just take a left turn at, at Rusty Bellies and they're, they're fine. They're like trying to plane all the way through there, which is, which is absolutely crazy any time of the year. Never mind this time of the year when we have manatees and, and so forth in the water itself. So, I think we need to do both. We need to, for certain, um, extend the period of time that we're watching for manatees within, uh, within Spring Bayou. Although it's important to also note that that time period doesn't apply to people with repairing water rights and boats in that, in that bayou as well. And that Witcombe Bayou there, I think on, on one portion of it, should be no-wake as well, but it's not, for some strange line reason. Um, the whole area needs to be looked at, from, from my perspective. I just don't think, with the amount of boats that we get now, that having any of our waterways, other than an idle speed zone, is really, is really doing anything a favor. I mean, granted Kramer Bayou's kind of open and stuff like that, people do water skiing, we get a lot of jet skis traffic. Um, but, I mean, that's on Kramer. If I, I, I don't really see that on Witcombe, because I'm not there all the time, but I'm sure it happens and it shouldn't be.
Well, they're doing it at Witcombe, too.
I bet you they are.
Commissioner Carr?
Um, I'm for, um, boats having the ability to wakeboard in water skiing Witcombe Bayou. Um, I'm for the manatee ordinance being updated further. Thank you.
Commissioner Eisner? So let me clarify a couple of things here. First of all, I don't care whether you're using a boat, a jet ski, you're not catching a dolphin. Dolphins are fast as could be, so that's not gonna happen. But I do agree, the manatees, um, definitely are very slow-moving. Um, but no matter what you do on the inside, and no matter what you change, so, you don't know where they were hit. Um, a lot of these manatees are being hit out on the Gulf, because that's where they're coming from. Um, so no matter what we do on the inside, I mean, it's, it's corrective, um, but you also have to have the people follow the rules and regulations. They're not following the rules and regulations now. So, we could go through all of this process, as long as it's, um, you know, uh, not an in-depth thing to change. I'd love to see it changed. Uh, I don't think that people should be riding through their, um, you know, with, with propelled boats. You know, an impelled boat, you're not gonna do any damage to the manatee, and you're definitely not catching a dolphin. Um, but, you know, like I said, they, they're coming in through the Gulf, and people are flying out there. Um, you know, as, uh, the vice mayor said, up through the Anquo, they're just speeding, you know. It, once you get to that open speed limit, from there all the way to Miss Vicky's, it's a free-for-all. And many times, I'm coming through there, and they're just, people are flying right through the five, um, where that loss of life, the belligerent loss of life. So I mean, you know, signs don't stop people, and it's gonna be hard as heck to get a sign there, let alone, unless you have a police person, um, you know, um, giving out tickets, it's, you know. So we could go through all of this process and still not get anywhere. But it's, it's almost impossible to stop these kids from jumping on these jet skis and just going nuts. That's just what kids do, so. Commissioner Kuyas?
Definitely for more idle wake signs. I agree to, to look and explore in extending the, the date periods. I do still wanna be able to see people, uh, wakeboarding in Witcombe Bayou. It's sort of like one of the safer areas for, for individuals to go skiing, or, you know, wakeboarding in that area. Um, there's really not too many other spots for, um, you know, sea sports and, and stuff, and it's, other than that, you'd have to probably go along the river, and I don't think that's one of the safer areas, so. But we did get an email where, you know, an individual stated about even paddleboards in, in the wintertime and encroaching on, uh, the manatee, so I think that's something we should consider as well. So, just wanna get my input, and absolutely supporting it all. Thank you.
Yeah, I, um, cou- couple of things. One, um, um, on the ordinance, I've got it as ordinance, um, five dash twenty-eight, and it should be section of five dash twenty-eight of our ordinances, the City of Tarpon Springs, and I do that in another one. So, I just wanna mention that, so the, um, um, city clerk can correct that. Also, um, we did receive an email from Mr. Austin Woods, who operates a kayak rental. Um, he, he thinks that kayaks and paddle boats, paddleboards ought to be, uh, eliminated or restricted from the bayou as well. I'm talking about Spring Bayou. Uh, just to give the, um, manatees a little more, uh, peace of mind, uh, while they're in there. Um, the only thing I'm gonna be looking for is just a motion and a second to authorize the staff, um, to, uh, look at updating the ordinance, and let's see what they come back with.
So moved.
I'll second that. All right, roll call, please.
Commissioner Kuyas?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr? Vice Mayor Lunt?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticius?
Yes. Um, the other item is, um, item eighteen. This is, again, this, um, this is just to authorize the staff to spend time on looking at creating some kind of a hurricane flooding preparation recovery fee. Um, that's in the wake of Hurricane Ian. Uh, this is for, and I had conversations with Mr. Herring. Is that why Mr. Herring's here still? Because of this item?
Yeah, he just enjoys.
I don't know. He just likes to hang out here.
By our presence.
All right, so basically, um, it, it's, uh, we don't recover all of our costs from FEMA. And also, um, when there isn't a declaration, when a storm is coming and eventually a, a declaration isn't declared, we don't get anything back, and, and that's, we're somewhat proactive in making preparations for storms. So, um, it's just a thought that I had. I, um, there's a couple of examples that I gave him back. One was a shelter fee that Pasco County's charging, and then a form that you would typically use for filling out, uh, for, um, you know, for an application, so where you would have the fee. I don't know what the fee would be, but there would have to be some kind of a impact fee study that would be done, associated with it, to determine what that amount would be. Again, I'm just floating this i- in the wake of Hurricane Ian, and, um, this would apply to, um, buildings, um, and, um, substantial improvements of buildings in floodplains and coastal high hazard areas. So, yeah, let me go to public comments. Are there any public comments concerning this item? Mr. Jump, are there any, uh, remote access comments on this item?
And we do not have anyone in attendance at this time.
That's a no.
It's a normal, it's, we, we do have a normal town, people go to bed. All right, um, Commissioner Comments, Vice Mayor Lunt? Let me go to Commissioner Carr and give you a break. Go ahead.
Uh, Mayor, I, I gotta be honest with you, I don't understand what you're asking here. Um, so if, if a, a heavy hurricane comes through and wipes out buildings, if a building's being rebuilt, are you looking for impact fee to be an additional impact fee for new construction?
It would be very similar to the, uh, fire protection surcharge for buildings that are higher. For example, in this particular case, it would be for buildings that are actually built in the floodplain, in the coastal high hazard area.
Okay.
In other words, a, a typical home that's built outside the flood zone, um, wouldn't, they, they wouldn't be privy to this charge.
Yeah, but most of Tarpon Springs is in the flood zone, right?
Well, you know, we, we basically, um, spend money in preparing for floods. And, um, it's for people in, in evacuations and things of that nature, and, and, um, it's just to authorize the staff. I'm not asking to approve anything.
I'm just trying to understand.
But on the other hand, if there's no interest on the commission, there's no interest.
Sure, I'm just trying to understand it a little bit further. So, is it a, is it a fee, like it would be like a stormwater fee? Or is it a fee, like it would be an impact fee?
It's a one-time charge.
Okay, for new construction?
Building permit, um, it's like a, a, a fee, an impact fee.
And then that would only be allowed to be spent on certain items, then?
Certain one.
That, that, the impact fee would only be spent on certain items, then?
Yeah, and the one thing that I talked about was, uh, for, uh, for example, these flood grants that we're getting, for flood mitigation grants, that, that would, uh, the Arcadis thing, where we're gonna have to have a matching grant.
You know, um, I'm not interested in doing any additional fees, so I'm, I'm not gonna support it. I, I, I get it, but.
No, no, I understand. Okay. Commissioner Eisner?
I still would like to know what, um, what, if we collect the impact fees, what would we utilize them for?
For one, to, to put money back in the coffer that is spent that we can't recover from FEMA, because they just won't recover that part of it, or we would use it for, uh, part of a match. Um, that would be required for a grant for, um, flood mitigation, very similar to what we're doing Witcombe Bayou.
So we would then be claims examiners? We would then be claims examiners?
Not sure I understand.
If, if we were to, uh, FEMA pays about eighty, eighty-five percent of the loss, would we be picking up the other fifteen percent?
No, this is city expense. It's got nothing to do with homeowners.
Right, but I'm saying, what would we u- utilize the money that we're collecting for?
We spend money to prepare for floods. Every time there's a storm that's approaching, we actually send people out to do a variety of things. The sand, the sandbags are not free, for example. And so, we don't get reimbursed one hundred percent for all of that. Uh, we, we get, um, um, I, I think it's five percent and twelve percent, twelve and a half percent, we don't get reimbursed. And so, it would be, uh, to put that back in. And then, uh, on the other hand, we could also use it for, uh, matching the grants, um, for flood mitigation, s- similar to Witcombe, uh, Bayou.
See, I would be more inclined to utilize that to, um, um, an area that we could eventually save money to build, to build up, um, you know, to a place to secure, to secure people, um, in the event of a flood. I don't know if the sandbags are so costly. I don't know any of that, yeah.
It's, that's just one item.
I know.
It, it's, it, it's just something that is coming out of Hurricane Ian.
Right.
And we can wait. There's no, believe me, there's no urgency to this. And, um, I just felt it was important to, uh, bring it forward. And if the commission is not interested, it is, you know.
I would, I would like, I'm, I'm interested if we could have a center to put seniors or people that are in flood zones, because we don't have that. That I would be interested in. I'm not interested in, um, making somebody's loss whole, you know? I mean, that's.
There's, I'm not talking about somebody's loss, I'm talking about the city of Tarpon Springs government's loss.
Even the city, I mean.
You don't care about making the city government's loss whole, because we don't get reimbursed.
No, that's not what I'm saying. I, I don't see that being a major expense. That's, unless somebody could explain to me how much we're losing, you know, putting sandbags out and, and sand when we have, you know, a hurricane. I mean, I, how much could that be? Ron, how much did we spend?
How much money did it cost us to get prepped for E- E, even though nothing happened? We, we activated the EOC, we put out sandbags, we evacuated the hospital.
Well, I think what you, I think the mayor's trying to say, the twelve and a half percent, is sometimes we have hurricanes that come in, they're not declared, so the city has activated the EOC, we've had all these expenses, but then it's not declared as a storm, and the city's out the money for that. I think that's part of what the mayor is saying. And if they do get declared, the, you know, FEMA, the federal portion will pay seventy-five percent as their standard one, so the, the state will pick up twelve and a half, and then the city has to pick up the remaining twelve and a half percent. Uh, sandbags, um, sometimes they're five, six thousand dollars when they're trying to restock those things.
So this is just, but this is just not sandbags. We're talking about money that we have to spend to man the EOC and prep the EOC, and do what other safety mechanisms that, that fire and police have to do to, to lock the city down. And if we don't get reimbursed for that, this is twelve and a half percent. If you, if, whether, if it's a named storm, we still lose twelve and a half percent. If it's an unnamed storm, we don't get reimbursed at all.
Nothing at all.
But twelve and a half percent of what? How much are we spending is the question?
Five million dollars, it could be five thousand.
Of whatever the expenditures are and stuff that we had, you know, like for Hurricane Ian, but that was declared. We had about three hundred thousand dollars worth of salaries and expenses for Hurricane Ian.
Okay, that's what I was asking.
Okay.
Okay. So, would it be five and twelve and a half percent of that, that we don't recover?
How much is it?
Twelve, twelve and a half percent we don't recover of that, or?
Correct.
Okay.
It'd be seven thousand five hundred dollars.
Okay. Chief Young, do you have anything to add to that?
Thank you, Mr. Herring.
No, what we're on the same is, that's an estimate that we come up with, that we have to submit to the county, so this county can get their projections to meet a criteria. So, it's, this storm here is around three hundred thousand. I think Irma was a lot more than that. So, we're up in the millions then, so, just on salary, so.
Well, Hurricane Irma had debris removed, too.
So, that's just for one storm, um, and it was declared emergency, and if it wasn't declared, then we would be eating up the three hundred thousand dollars. Uh, that's just the thought behind this, and this would be, I mean, it doesn't have to be the three hundred thousand. It could be, we do things all the time, bringing it down, um, between, there are certain things we do that apply to everybody because it's more of a wind sort of effect. I'm just talking about the flood, which is, you know, the one that's in the floodplain, so.
I mean, listen, if you want, um, I'm not against, you know, totally against, uh, making a miniscule, uh, impact fee that goes towards that, if that's what you want to do. That's like a tax, um, you know?
Well, no, I mean, it's just trying to get an idea from you as far as, uh, we can, we can just defer this, and you can think about it a little more, talk to some residents, and, and we don't need to make a decision tonight. I certainly don't want to be wasting the staff's time and then come back, and it's something that the commission doesn't want to do. If it's just an idea that was worth doing, and I haven't, uh, now, I asked you for your comments. Do you have anything else?
Not really.
Okay, Commissioner Kuyas.
Uh, I, I don't mind exploring it, but I, I do have concerns with, you know, just single-family residents and what those fees could be. Uh, does it apply to, um, additions on houses as well, or, you know, what it?
It's like, it's like a one-time fee, either, um, you know, if you, you have a, a home that is, uh, pre-firm, and you want to do a substantial improvement, it would apply to something like that, or if it's a vacant lot, or if you, you know, if it's a vacant lot, you would, you would apply the fee to that. It would be a one-time fee.
Yeah, I don't mind exploring it, just to, uh, see where, where it is, but, uh, definitely, I, you know, see the benefit to any type of development in coastal high-hazard, you know, especially commercial and whatnot, so we could be able, so.
I'm bringing to you as a former engineer, because I don't understand why you keep building things in coastal high-hazard areas, they get whacked, and then we just go right back and build them again, expect something different's going to happen again in the next time, so, um, it's pretty much what my memorandum stated. Um, this storm is going to cost us big time, uh, Hurricane Ian, for years and years and years, so, go ahead.
Would it be easy enough, I hate to do this to planning, but would it be easy enough for Renee's people to run through last year what was done for, what would qualify as, as, as improvements last year that would fall under this?
Yeah.
And then extrapolate, you know, a, a reasonable impact fee and see what kind of an impact that makes on our budget? I mean, if we're, there's not a lot of development property left in, in Tarpon Springs, so the amount of people that are building on the shoreline, for example, or, or are doing what's considered significant improvement, which is over fifty percent, or under BFE, um, is, is, I would imagine is quite minimal.
So, so, why don't we just leave it, because the hour's getting late? It's almost, to them, forty-five. Um, let's just explore this a little further by you having some conversations, if you'd like, with Mr. Herring and, and Chief Young and the city manager, and then we'll just move on. Is that okay?
Yeah.
All right. Um, so, we've got two items left.
Oh.
Um, one is very important, which is, uh, there shouldn't be a whole lot to this one. This is authorized exten, uh, excuse me, this is item two of addendum one, authorize execution of contract for purchase of vacant land on South Florida Avenue and preparation of referendum documents. This is for the South Florida Avenue.
Lost property.
Property. So, um, let me go to public comments and see if there's any public comments out there. Um, Mr. Jump, are there any public comments or anybody waiting?
They're asleep.
And we have no one in attendance at this time.
Okay. Um, Vice Mayor Lunt, do you have any comments?
No comments at all.
Okay. Commissioner Carr.
No, we have a motion to approve.
Yeah, a motion to approve. Okay. Let me, um, hang on on the second. Commissioner Eisner, you can make a comment, second the motion, if you want.
I, uh, have no comment, but I'll make the second.
Okay, Commissioner Kuyas.
Move things along.
I have no comment.
Uh, roll call, please.
Commissioner Kuyas?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lunt?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticios.
Yes. The, um, the last item is, uh, consideration of staff authorization to amend, uh, section two dash ninety-two point one, fire protection impact fee surcharge. Uh, this was brought in about the time when the Tarpon Towers was, um, was created. We bought a ladder truck, and the city incorporated a surcharge for any buildings that are tall or wider and deeper, I think by a hundred feet, and, um, it hasn't been updated for, I think, thirty years, whatever I have in my memorandum, it's been many, many years. And, um, I think it's time we update that, especially given, um, the hotel. Um, this is for any buildings greater than thirty-five feet, hotels, at the Sponge Docks, um, uh, five-story buildings for, I think it's five-story, for Anquo Harbor? Yeah, five-story, whatever it's going to be. Uh, so, um, that's all that there is, is just authorize the staff to, uh, to amend that, come up with a new, um, amount, although, uh, because the state statute's changed in twenty twenty-one, it's not going to be more than twen- twelve and a half percent, uh, per year of what is there right now. So, let me go to, um, Commissioner Comments, uh, or, did I ask for, no, I didn't.
Yeah, you need your public.
Uh, public comments. Any public comments on this?
I don't see any.
Um, Mr. Jump, are there any, uh, comments?
And we do not have anyone in attendance.
Pass it up candy, if you guys wanted to.
Halloween.
There's, there's.
Everybody's throat's wearing out.
No comments. All right. Vice Mayor Lunt, do you have any comments?
I think we should direct the staff to do this.
Okay.
It's, thirty years is way too long.
All right. Commissioner Carr?
Yeah, I agree, and I make a motion to.
All right.
Direct staff.
I agree and do the second.
Did you make a motion?
Yes, sir.
Wow. And you seconded it.
He wants out.
Commissioner Kuyas?
I agree, and thank you for exploring, uh, researching this.
Okay. I was researching that at the same time I was thinking about the other thing, so, all right. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Kuyas?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lunt?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticios?
Yes. I think that ends the agenda. Is that correct?
It sure does.
All right. Uh, staff comments.
No comments, sir.
Um, Ms. Jackson? Same answer, of course.
No.
No comments.
Vice Mayor Lunt?
Good evening. Sorry for coughing here, but I'm getting over bronchitis.
Nothing. Commissioner Eisner?
I'm fine. I'm getting over nothing, but, uh, thank you and good night.
Commissioner Kuyas?
No comments.
Um, we have, uh, just want to remind the board, we have Ohie Day on Friday, and that, um, church begins at, um, ten, and then there's a, um, a lay, a placing of a wreath at noon at Craig Park at the War Memorial, so that's the big one for this week coming up. Ohie Day. All right.
I will be there.
Pardon me?
I'll be there.
Okay. Meeting adjourned, eleven forty-three. Thank you, everybody.
That is a powerful cough.